Good afternoon, everybody. It is Friday, September 20th, 2024. This is a regular meeting of the Commissioners of the City of Rehoboth Beach. We are live in the City Hall Commissioners Room, second floor. I like to call this meeting to order exactly 2:00 PM. The first thing we start off with is administration of oath of office to the two highest vote-getters in the last municipal election. We're doing them in alphabetical order, so we'd like Commissioner, or Pending Commissioner Suzanne Good to come forward with anybody you'd like, and Judge Renee Bennett will join you. You're gonna come right up here, front and center, facing that-a-way. And switch positions there. There you go.
Raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. Aye, and state your full name.
Aye, Suzanne Good.
Do proudly affirm...
Do proudly affirm...
To carry out the responsibilities...
To carry out the responsibilities...
Of the Officer of Commissioner...
Of the Office of Commissioner...
Of the City of Rehoboth Beach...
Of the City of Rehoboth Beach...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
Freely acknowledging the powers of this office...
Freely acknowledging the powers of this office...
Flow from the people I am privileged to represent...
Flow from the people...
I am privileged to represent... I further affirm...
I further affirm...
Always to place the public interest...
Always to place the public interest...
Above any special...
Above any special...
Or personal interests...
Or personal interests...
And to respect the right of future generations...
And to respect the right of future generations...
To share the rich historic...
To share the rich historic...
And natural heritage...
And natural heritage...
Of Delaware...
Of Delaware...
In doing so...
In doing so...
I will always uphold...
I will always uphold... In doing so, I will always uphold...
And defend...
And defend...
The constitutions of my country...
The constitutions of my country...
And my state...
And my state...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Congratulations.
There you go. I assure you, it gets easier the second and third time. Next, we have Craig Thier.
Aye, and state your full name.
Aye, Craig Thier.
Do proudly affirm...
To proudly affirm...
To carry out the responsibilities...
To carry out the responsibilities...
Of the Officer, of the Office of Commissioner...
Of the Office of Commissioner...
Of the City of Rehoboth Beach...
Of the City of Rehoboth Beach...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
Freely acknowledging...
Freely acknowledging...
That the powers of this office...
That the powers of this office...
Flow from the people...
Flow from the people...
I am privileged to represent...
I am privileged to represent...
I further affirm...
I further affirm...
Always to place the public...
Always to place the public...
Interests above any special...
Interests above any special...
Or personal interests...
Or personal interests...
And to respect the right of future generations...
And to respect the right of future generations...
To share the rich historic...
To share the rich historic...
And natural heritage...
And natural heritage...
Of Delaware...
Of Delaware...
In doing so...
In doing so...
I will always uphold...
I will always uphold...
And defend...
And defend...
The constitutions of my country...
The constitutions of my country...
And my state...
And my state...
Congratulations. Sir's on.
Try.
Thank you. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call the first time for this new Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Suzanne Good. Commissioner Don Preston, absent. Commissioner Ed Schonowski...
Here.
Commissioner Patrick Gossett...
Here.
Commissioner Bunky Markert...
Here.
Commissioner Craig Thier...
Here.
Mayor Stan Mills, here. And we have a quorum, so we're able to formally conduct business today. I would like to also thank the staff for being here and identify those. Start over here. Matt Janis is the Building Inspector, Chief Building Inspector. Raise your hand there real quick. City Secretary Ann Womack. On my left, City Manager Taylor Tedder. On my right, City Solicitor Alex Burns. Keith "Chief" Banks. Mary Ellen Gray, Planning and Community Development Director in the back corner here. Henry Matlos, Public Works Supervisor in the red shirt back there. Oh, you're hiding. Assistant City Manager Evan Miller and Finance Director Bert Dukes. If I missed anybody. Public Works, Water Department, Mr. Downs. Thank you all for being here. And what's your name?
Rocco.
Lynn Cohen, goodness gracious. I may have to just do a group thank you in the future. Thank you all for being here. We're going to thank all those that are watching virtually. Don't forget, this is livestreamed and also recorded. Also want to thank all those of you that are here in person. As you know, on certain topics, we invite feedback. We do have a three-minute comment period, one time per topic. We also have at the end of the agenda, an item called "Public Comment." That's for off-topic at the end of the agenda. And we also have the three-minute time limit there. I want to remind everybody, we have support documents. Those are documents that support our agenda items. When they're ready, a sufficient time ahead of the meeting, they are embedded in the agenda. If you go to rehoboth.com, look on the portal, and you'll be able to click on the meeting date, that, for instance, today's date, and receive a big packet of information so that you can see the same documents that we see. I do want to exercise my privileges there because we have a guest attorney here who has to go back north, a two-hour trip. So I am going to change the topic sequence to after city solicitors' report and before departmentate reports. I am going to insert New Business B and C, which deal with the interpretation and enforcement of zoning code, Chapter 270. So that's the one switched tonight to get that done a little quicker. So the next agenda item is election of officers. This happens to be the same slate of officers we've had in last year. And my nominations for the election of officers this year, Vice President Commissioner Patrick Gossett, Secretary of the Board Commissioner Ed Schonowski, Assistant Secretary Ann Womack, and Treasurer Mary Moore. She gets to come in and sign most of the checks that we do. With that, I would entertain a motion to elect that slate of four as our officers.
Mayor, I move approval of the election of officers as listed.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ed Schonowski and a second by Commissioner Patrick Gossett to elect the slate of officers presented for us. Is there any discussion? If not, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And they are unanimously elected this year. With that, we'll move on to the next item of business, which is consider adoption of a resolution relating to the opening of bank accounts. Alex?
Thank you very much, Mayor. So this is a resolution of the mayor and commissioners. Be it resolved that the Treasurer of the City of Rehoboth Beach be, and she is hereby authorized to open and maintain a bank account, and any bank authorized to do business in the state of Delaware, which has an office within five miles of the corporate limits of the City of Rehoboth Beach. And be it further resolved that Stanley A. Mills Jr., Mayor of the City of Rehoboth Beach, and President of the Commissioners of Rehoboth Beach, and J. Patrick Gossett, Vice President of the Commissioners, or either of those two, and Mary Moore, Treasurer of the City of Rehoboth Beach, shall be authorized signatories of any bank account opened by the Treasurer. And be it further resolved that checks, drafts, notes, and other instruments or documents drawn on the city's accounts may bear the facsimile signature of Stanley A. Mills Jr., Mayor of the City of Rehoboth Beach, and President of the Board of Commissioners of Rehoboth Beach, and that facsimile specimens of such signatures shall be filed with banks where the city deposits its funds. That's to be signed by the Secretary and witnessed by the city manager.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution before us relating to the opening of bank accounts.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ed Schonowski and a second by Commissioner Patrick Gossett to adopt the resolution before us relating to the opening of bank accounts. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And the motion's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. With that, correspondence. We have no correspondence in front of us that was received timely in front of the meeting to have embedded in there. We do have correspondence, I believe, from Nan Hunter and John Dewey that was received after the fact. So just wanted to make sure you understood we acknowledge that. And with that, the next item of business is approval of minutes. We're not going to be seeking approval of any at this meeting. They'll go on to the next meeting. And we'll move right along to City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board of Commissioners. Earlier this week, a staff steering committee kicked off the strategic planning process with Emergent Method, the firm selected by the city for this important undertaking. The process is expected to take about seven months, with the final strategic plan anticipated in March. Emergent Method will employ several engagement strategies in developing the City of Rehoboth Beach's strategic plan, including desk research and analysis, one-on-one interviews with a group of stakeholders, up to four community-focused group meetings, an online survey of community partners, and an anonymous survey of city staff. Moving on, like other beaches in Delaware, Maryland, and Virginia, Rehoboth Beach has been dealing this week with instances of medical waste washing ashore. Denrec has issued a swimming advisory through Tuesday for all of Delaware Ocean Beaches. The city has been and will continue as much as possible through the weekend to rake the beach twice a day. We have come across fewer items each day as the week goes on. The water is open knee-deep today due to surf conditions, and we have signs posted as an advisory. As a reminder, Sunday is the last day of the lifeguarding season in Rehoboth Beach. The beach patrol and temporary restrooms. A large concrete pore for the first-floor foundation had to be scrubbed earlier this week due to weather conditions and has been rescheduled for Monday. After the pore, the CMU, the Concrete Masonry Units, will be set. The city will be removing one of the temporary restroom trailers at Grenoble Place next week, and I'm pleased to report, we were able to secure the southernmost temporary restroom to remain in place through the Sea Witch Festival. It will be locked after this Sunday until it's reopened on Friday, October 25th, the first day of the Sea Witch Festival. But for those of you familiar with it, it does have three individual restrooms there, so we're really glad that we're able to keep that through the festival. Nothing major was found on the final walkthrough on the State Road Pump Station project. The contractors are working through a punch list of items. As previously mentioned, a permanent white vinyl fence will be installed in about two weeks with roughly the same footprint as the current construction fence. In an effort to enhance communication in an increasingly digital world with our passionate, engaged community, I will begin hosting an in-person quarterly coffee to talk with residents and business owners about city issues and projects impacting them. The first is scheduled for Monday, September 30th, at 9:00 AM at Rise Up, located at 502 Rehoboth Avenue. And last but not least, there are two street aid expenditures this month, a payment of $2,007.50 to Apple Electric and $8,854 to Delmarva Power. And I'm here for any questions you may have.
Very good. Any questions of the City Manager?
Just one, if I may. As part of your report, the budget report was included for July 2024, and one of the categories is the general fund interest on treasury. And I'm just curious, the last sentence there, "The increase is due to differences in rates as well as an increase in principal when the income earned is rolled over." Just curious, in developing the fund balance policy that we're working on, will the fund balance policy or some other policy direct if it's to be rolled over consistently? Or is there a policy that, at some point, if it reaches a certain maximum dollar amount, that we will then move that to operating income? I don't need an answer now, but I'd like to have that addressed in the future.
Sure. We'll look into that. Thank you.
Question about the Emergent Method...
Suzanne?
Sorry, consultancy.
Sure.
I had expressed reservations about that back in July before I was elected, and I'm wondering what the... I know it's been signed, but what the timeframe is on that? Unless everybody is on board to see really tangible results from that, I'm hoping that maybe it could be reconsidered at some point. So could you describe, like, is it a one-year contract? You said it includes focus groups and other aspects.
Right. So it's a contract for the full process, so it is a seven-month process.
Which began last month? Or...
Early September.
Yeah, okay.
So it concludes in March.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of the City Manager?
Sure. And I apologize, I didn't realize you were covering their budget as well. Parking revenues. Do you want... Oh, I apologize. I'll learn to do that. So parking revenues. Do you want to give any sort of update on parking revenues?
Sure. So our Assistant City Manager was researching this earlier for us in anticipation of that, so if he or our Finance Director want to come on up.
Parking revenue, you can see that it's increased from the prior year, and it was a big driver, one of the big drivers of a revenue increase year-to-date for the April-to-July period. And the dollar-an-hour increase is really responsible for the additional revenue we've had. So there are a number of categories in there. I won't go down those categories unless you want to, but I mean, basically, the drivers that increased our revenue for the four-month period, transfer tax was up, your property tax, that's reflected. You've got more money from over half a million dollars from the prior year. So those were the revenue drivers. Are there more questions?
Just, you know, parking... Sorry. Parking revenue, you know, compared to what we budgeted, how do we expect to compare to budget?
Well, we expect to fall short of our budget. We're still settling up and closing out for the year, but it will be a minimum of $200,000 under budget, and could be more than that.
Thank you.
If not, we'll move on to City Solicitors' Report. Alex?
Thank you very much, Mayor. So I just have a few things today. I just wanted to make a brief comment on new business items B and C. Those are the ordinances to amend Chapter 236, and the ordinance to amend Chapter 270 of the city code, and the related resolution setting a public hearing. So for full disclosure, as you already know, my firm also represents the Planning Commission, and Max Walton is here today. He's been brought on to handle those items. Max drafted those ordinances, that legislation, and he's here today to handle those items. And then also, recently, it's been reported in the news, a new case, case number 2024-0851-BWD was filed in the Court of Chancery, and it's been reported in the news. It's still very much in the early stages. The plaintiffs are alleging a violation of the city charter, and Jim McMackin and Larry Cronin have been retained to handle that matter on behalf of the city. Still in the very much early stages. The city has filed a motion to dismiss. There's a briefing schedule that's been approved by the court. The city's opening brief in support of its motion to dismiss will be filed on or before October 18th. Thereafter, there will be a response, and the court may require oral argument. So more to come on that one. And then 330 Hospitality Group versus the city. Recall, that's the rezoning case. I don't have an update on that one. Right now, we're in a holding pattern. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, Bunkie Commissioners? Very good. We'll move right on. At this point, I mentioned we're going to deviate. We're going to bring up new business items B and C to the front, and before we resume our agenda, you can, I may bring up the agenda item here. You can read it yourself. Then I'd like to give a little preface. You can read it again. You can read it yourself. I would like to identify the support document, or three support documents under the agenda items. Would like to make mention that there are some corrections that I would like to share with you all. They are written right up here. I think the easiest way to address the corrections is that wherever in the three documents there's a synopsis and it mentions Chapter 230, it's really referring to Chapter 270. Just one little glitch there. So if you all would make that note on your documents. And what I would like to share is that differing opinions have been voiced over almost a year about the limits of authority of the Planning Commission and the building and licensing. Most recently, proposed amendments to Chapter 236 authored by the Planning Commission were presented to the Commissioners during the workshop meeting on May 6, 2024. Included within those proposed amendments was a change which would allow the Planning Commission to independently review a site plan and determine whether the plan complies with applicable city laws and regulations, including but not limited to Chapter 270 zoning. To assist in resolving the differences and to clarify, City Manager Tedder hired attorney Max Walton to analyze the situation and provide his conclusion in the form of proposed code amendments, which are before us today. The intent of discussion today is to introduce the proposed clarifying amendments. I am not anticipating to take a vote today other than to possibly vote to adopt a resolution scheduling a public hearing to consider the proposed amendments to 270 and including proposed amendments to 236 as articulated in the attached resolution support document. I think we need to be mindful that changes to code in Chapter 270, which is zoning, are required to have a public hearing, whereas changes to Chapter 236 entitled "Subdivision of Land and Site Plan Review" are not required to have a public hearing. But it seems prudent to consider changes to 236 concurrently with changes in Chapter 270. This public hearing affords all parties because it will be likely four weeks hence. Public hearing affords all parties another opportunity to voice opinions beyond the day. And with that, I want to offer the floor to Taylor or Evan.
Sure. Really, I would like to just introduce our special counsel, Max Walton of Connolly Gallagher, for his presentation.
And it's going to be a very short presentation because the mayor, I think, covered the landscape for me. Thank you, Mayor. Ultimately, this would be a change in code because there is some uncertainty about who is the determiner under the zoning code, and so I was asked to draft, you know, language that made that clear. Ultimately, if the building inspector makes a decision under this proposal and the Planning Commission disagrees, then the Planning Commission could ask the building inspector to reconsider, and then they would have an appeal to the Board of Adjustment under the 236 changes for minor, major, and site plan. There's also the 270 amendment just makes it clear that the building inspector is also the interpreter of the zoning code. At the end of the day, Mayor, you got it right, and the public, the resolution to set a public hearing today is a little bit different than your standard form because, as the mayor stated, you're not required to have a public hearing on Chapter 236 amendments, but it says that you will listen to those changes at that same public hearing.
Thank you, Max. I don't know if anybody wants to go over it. My thought today, for me, I wanted to focus on two things. One is whether or not it's appropriate to go to public hearing, is the timing right? And two, whether the content of the proposed amendments are acceptable to take to the public hearing. In the matter of, number one, whether it's appropriate to go to public hearing, I'd just like to share my thoughts on both of these. I've been mindful, the presentation by Planning Commission Attorney Luke Metta on April 8th, I believe it was, and the other one I noted in my introduction. And I recall that some Commissioners were unsettled by his presentation, and in other words, they questioned what was being proposed. So for me, yes, I believe it is time. I think it's late, actually, but I think it's time that we resolve this as soon as possible, which means the public hearing needs to be conducted as soon as possible. Addressing number two, is the content acceptable? I think it is, but I would like to ask a couple of questions. We did get a couple of letters, happened to be from Planning Commission members, questioning the insertion of the pending ordinance doctrine in there. And they were both, did their analysis and provided it to the Commissioners. And so with respect to the pending ordinance doctrine that they reference, two questions. Can you clarify the value of the pending ordinance doctrine in here? And number two, can we answer what, if any, harm might occur to the main tenants of these proposals if we remove the pending ordinance doctrine?
So I'll try to be very brief with my answer. First, I'm going to answer your second question first. No, there would be no change to the document or the ordinance at all. You could remove the pending ordinance doctrine from this. Second, the reason it's in there is whenever I do an amendment to the zoning code, that's something I usually drift in there. It's something I left in here for this one. If you do not want to have the pending ordinance doctrine, the ordinances function prospectively anyway, so you could just move to public hearing and just not have the public ordinance doctrine, be part of it.
Okay, okay. So I kind of spoke in advance of everybody. I'd like to give everybody up here an opportunity to speak or ask questions of Max before we go to members of the public and offer them the opportunity to speak. Being mindful that one of our actions today, potential actions, is to consider, which means vote on a resolution setting a date to be able to conduct a public hearing. So there, again, there will be another opportunity for people to talk. Commissioners? Anybody?
Go ahead.
Nope. Please.
I was just saying, I would like to hear from the public.
You want to say anything, Patrick?
No, I'll wait, obviously.
All right, all right. We'll go to the members of the public. We'll go to the members of the public. Remember, there's a three-minute timeline. If you would, come up to the microphones, everybody here and at home can see you, and state your name and relationship to the city. Mike Strange?
Can I use that?
You may, uh-huh. Just make sure you pull that microphone close to you, Mike.
Okay. I just have one quick question. Is there a specifics?
Our timer is up here, folks, so that everybody can see it.
In that case, I'm going to not read my question. I'm going to go into the detail. I wanted to know who wrote this legislative proposal. I'm going to talk very quickly because of that timer. This proposal appears to be an end run by somebody for the sole purpose of the pecuniary gain of an individual, company, or corporate entity, and avoid due process and screw the citizens of Rehoboth Beach. A building inspector, current, past, or future, as a single individual, is incapable of having the breadth and depth of knowledge necessary for a valid determination of compliance across many specialties of engineering, science, law, and demands an interdisciplinary approach. This proposal essentially neuters the entire legal and scientific principles of why a planning commission is of necessity for a valid evaluation of quantitative and qualitative material facts. A multidisciplinary team is essential for the evaluation of a proposed design, determined of its validity across many dimensions of law and science. The previous legal counsel to the PC, which was the same legal counsel to the Board of Commissioners, up until when he resigned, publicly stated at the last PC meeting he attended that the building inspector evaluations were final and binding over the PC's jurisdiction. This was a very strange statement because for the previous 10 years, he opined in public meetings that the polar opposite and that the BI pronouncements were not final, as delineated explicitly in the code, and yes, they were preliminary when certain criteria were met under Chapters 36 et al. to require PC involvement. I stand, I stick and state affirmatively without hesitation that in multiple cases over the last 12 years where I have been a member of the Planning Commission, the building inspector's preliminary report of a plan was in fact materially incorrect as a matter of law, and its dimensional characteristics were incorrect yet approved by the building inspector. Calculations shown by a plat, by a licensed and sealed Delaware engineer, professional engineer, were wrong, dimensionally incorrect yet approved by the building inspector. The building inspector failed to recognize the standards as required by the IBC, ASCE, ASME, IEEE, UL, etc., and referenced in the Rehoboth Beach Building Code and referenced in various plans submitted were non-code compliant yet approved by the building inspector. In one situation, an applicant lied on the application, the plan, the proposed use, and made other material misstatements of fact, and the building inspector approved the plan. In several instances, consultants hired by the city to confirm the validity and compliance to the code for submitted plans preliminarily approved by the building inspector, those outside consultants also made material errors in their evaluation and missed key elements that rendered design non-code compliant materially unsafe as designed. In all cases I just mentioned and other several others, the Planning Commission identified non-compliant elements missed by the building inspector and the outside consultants. An interdisciplinary team, as exemplified by the construct of the Planning Commission, is essential for the continued viability and success of Rehoboth Beach, as stated in the Rehoboth Beach Comprehensive Plan. This resolution proposal is presented as a travesty of ignorance and abject stupidity, and if enacted, can and will materially negative impact the lives of all Rehoboth Beach citizens and visitors. Facts do not cease to exist just because they're ignored, and science is true whether or not one believes in it. This resolution ignores 100 years of proven facts.
Thank you, Mike.
And behavioral sciences.
Would you send your letter to us, if you would?
I'm going to give it to.
Including the preface that you already read there.
Okay.
And want to make sure the minutes identify you as a.
I am a member of the Planning Commission for 12 years.
Thank you, Mike.
Which I can be removed at any time.
Thank you, Mike. John? Identify yourself and.
John Dewey. Can I be heard? John Dewey, 105 Scarborough Avenue, member of the Planning Commission, but speaking today only as a private citizen. I would like to open my remarks with a few general comments. First and most importantly, nothing I am about to say is intended to be critical of any individual. I have nothing but respect for the city staff who meet with the Planning Commission and their commitment to their professions and the city. The draft legislation should be rejected for the following five reasons. First, the current code has served the city well by protecting the city and its citizens from erroneous decisions by the building inspector regarding commercial projects. The proposals coming before the city are incredibly complex, not just for the more obvious factors of size, scale, amassing, but also engineering and risk of negative impacts on abutting neighbors. A site plan review model that ensures that the input of others with special knowledge who do not have a financial interest in the outcome is key to assuring that proposals are in fact co-compliant. Second, the current code assures that commercial projects receive a transparent review open to citizen input prior to final approval. Citizen comment has been instrumental in identifying significant issues that were simply not addressed in the building inspector report. Under the proposed legislation, it would be difficult, if not impossible, to assure that legitimate and database citizen concerns are fully considered prior to project approval. Third, the current code ensures commercial projects are reviewed in an ethical manner. The proposed legislation opens the door to potential undue influence being applied to the building inspector during closed meetings. The proposed legislation also opens the door to the building inspector being subject to undue influence by elected city officials or city executive staff. Under, four, under current code, commercial project proposals that are co-compliant move quickly. It makes a difference when all parties present are operating together in good faith to problem-solve and identify solutions. The mixed-use proposal for three structures on the former ClearSpace property, location or case in point, from initial review to final hearing and approval was only a matter of a few months. Fifth and final, the proposed legislation invites chaos through requiring that the Planning Commission appeal to the Board of Adjustment to resolve issues it may have with the building inspector report on a commercial project. The proposed time limits negate any opportunity for the Planning Commission to review the report in a timely manner, review it in public in a duly noticed meeting, and if necessary, file an appeal to the Board of Adjustment before the deadline. The proposed legislation will, through this provision, effectively remove any opportunity the Planning Commission may have to address serious deficiencies in the building inspector report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Next. Anybody? Tom?
Tom Gainer, a property owner in Rehoboth. So I couldn't disagree more with the Planning Commission representatives that just spoke. The Planning Commission, if you watch the Planning Commission, are not really the arbiters of a special talent or special expertise, as demonstrated by some of the insipidly stupid questions that have been asked, that have held up one of the most major opportunities for the revitalization of the economics of this town in connection with the hotel projects. And when you actually see that it has resulted in litigation, the Planning Commission is actually responsible for that issue. As much as I have disagreed with Matt vociferously in the past, he's accountable to us. He's accountable to you. The staff is accountable to us. The staff and the commission is accountable to us. The Planning Commission, I don't know who they're accountable to. Maybe the person who nominated the individuals or what, but they certainly operate like a law unto themselves. They should be accountable to this commission and to Matt's determination as the professional who has the opportunity with our money and the duty and the fiduciary duty to us as stakeholders in this community to get whatever expertise is required to adjudicate any proposal that comes in front of him. The Planning Commission are amateurs. They are residents. They don't necessarily have to hold any particular special expertise, and to think otherwise is silly. The administration of this city and the concerns of its citizens should be in the hands of the elected officials and the employees, and those should be setting the parameters by which any project is adjudicated by amateurs and volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else? Mr. Good? And then Mr. Perry?
Hi, Jeffrey Good, resident. I don't know a lot about the Planning Commission. And when I don't know a lot about something, wouldn't it be wise to see how other cities have handled this issue? The little bit I know is I don't think too many other cities have a planning commission that overrules, that's higher up than their building inspector. I mean, that's just a little bit I heard, but I don't know if that's the case. And secondly, the one instance that I am familiar with the Planning Commission was on ClearSpace. And as I recall, it's a couple of years ago now, they sort of approved ClearSpace, and we needed the commission, even despite tons of disputes over parking. And I think it was the commissioners that actually had to settle that issue. So I guess it's worth looking into having the building inspector be in charge of building inspecting. That's what they're there for.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Rick Barry, please.
Richard Perry, 46 Pennsylvania Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, for letting me speak for a few moments. As you know, I've been opposed to the recommendations from the Planning Commission ever since they were presented to you. This is clearly an attempt by the Planning Commission to abrogate the authority of the building inspector to do something which is, as Mr. Good stated, it doesn't seem to be normal, certainly not in Delaware. I've done extensive research to determine whether or not planning commissions have the authority to overrule the building inspector on determinations of code compliance. It doesn't exist. When this was presented to you on April 8, I believe that the case law that was cited was misrepresented and do not stand for the propositions which Mr. Metta said they did. I have witnessed recently, and this has happened more than just recently, at least three instances in which the Planning Commission, you know, the current Planning Commission has basically overruled the interpretation of the building inspector and without authority, in my view. In one case, they determined that the Bell Haven was a dwelling. They did that through interpreting the code, in my view, incorrectly. They didn't apply the same analysis to the code when they determined that it was a requirement that the Bell Haven Hotel have two loading docks. Different kind of analysis. And they've done this before, and I think it's time that it be made clear that the Planning Commission's role is not as broad as they are trying to tell you it is, and you should not allow a planning commission, which in the future may not include some of the individuals with expertise, to determine what the code means when you have a building inspector and staff that deal with it day in and day out. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Francis?
I would just like to make. Hi, Frances Kelleher, Stokely Street resident. I'd just like to make the comment that the day that Mr. Metta gave his presentation, it was said there that the building inspector, the city, would come and sort of present their view. They weren't prepared, or if you will, that day, and it wasn't really part of the agenda, but that that was the intent. And as far as I know, we've never heard back on like how the city viewed what had been presented that day by the Planning Commission's lawyer. So I'm just making that as a point that, at least to my knowledge, we haven't really heard then what, you know, what the city thought of those things. Seems like a gap.
Thank you, Frances. Anybody else? Jan?
Jan Conacy, 42 Oak Avenue. I think this is absolutely terrible legislation. And frankly and honestly, I've been in this city for 50 years, and almost every year I can point out mistakes that building inspectors have made, and they're all over the city of Rehoboth, okay? Porches that aren't really porches. I made a presentation to the commissioners years ago about how we were proving things. That doesn't happen anymore. Happened with the previous. ClearSpace, building inspector said it was so many square feet, we had an architect review the plans, and that wasn't correct. He said they were code compliant. They weren't code compliant. They exceeded what was allowed. There are situations all over this city, and I see it at the Board of Adjustment, and I'm not going to go into cases here, but all you have to do is look at some of our cases and see the god-awful things that have happened because of building inspector mistakes. And I just think this is wrong, wrong, wrong. If the building inspector is presenting accurate information, then the Planning Commission, with their expertise, will realize that. So, and they will use it. The same thing that happens at the Board of Adjustment. You know, there are conflicts that happen all the time. And, but sometimes it's just a plain, ordinary error in judgment that the building inspector made, for whatever reason. And I think this is a terrible piece of legislation. And ClearSpace, frankly, was not solved. ClearSpace was solved in court. The Planning Commission's was overturned, the appeal was overturned by the city commissions, and it went to court. So that's what happened with ClearSpace. Had nothing to do with the building inspector, who was not here anymore, but who's the one that made the mistake on the square footage of ClearSpace. And it took, it took a lawyer, it took an architect. I will also point out that I don't know very much about the hotel, the Beach Haven or whatever it is, Belmont, the one on First and Rehoboth, Papa John's Hotel. But the first plans that were shown were this god-awful rectangular down Rehoboth Avenue. From all this work with the Planning Commission, it's a smaller hotel, and it is a far, far more attractive hotel than would have been built there originally if everything would have gone ahead as predicted. And if you want to look at those plans, look at the ones that they first presented, and then go and look at the ones they have now. It's like a whole different ballgame. The building inspector had absolutely nothing to do with that.
Thank you, Jan. Anybody else? Nan?
My name is Nan Hunter. I'm a member of the Planning Commission, speaking in my personal capacity and not on behalf of the Planning Commission. But first, I would, I'd like to freeze the clock if I could for a moment because I am the author of the letter to which the mayor referred that focused only on the issue of the pending ordinance doctrine, as each member knows. My interpretation of what the exchange was, was that it appears likely that the language that seeks to misuse the pending ordinance doctrine, even if it was inadvertently included, will be removed. If that is the case, then I would proceed with my comments. If that is not the case, then I would ask to be able to speak again after there is some decision about the pending ordinance doctrine.
If I let you speak extra time than I have to do everybody else, just proceed and we'll see.
Well, I've already used half of my time, so I would request some generosity with regard to time.
We'll give you a few seconds. Go ahead.
The pending ordinance doctrine language that exists in the legislation as it is, is a really horrible and, I think, quite possibly unconstitutional provision because of the impact it would have as a retroactive matter, almost like an ex post facto law. I was very glad to hear Mr. Walton acknowledge that removing that language would not affect the substance of the proposed ordinance, and that is my view as well, and that he would have no objection to removing that language. So with the caveat of what I said before, I'm just going to leave it at that in terms of that issue. But I do want to correct a couple of things that have been said. First of all, the, this is not an attempt by the Planning Commission, or there hasn't been an attempt, to abrogate the authority of the building inspector. The building inspector has the sole authority, always has, as far as I know, and will, with regard to all single-family homes and small commercial projects. The only matters that come before us for site plan review are large commercial projects. And we have been instrumental in saving the city from mistakes on those large commercial projects. I join the other commenters and invite you to listen to the meetings of the Planning Commission, which are all in public. Our reasons for endorsing the changes that we recommended to this ordinance are all publicly stated. Our reasons for taking action. And, you know, I would say in terms of the characterization of the membership of the Commission, I'm not going to talk about myself or actually any of the lawyers, because maybe that's too close. Mike Strange has been a professional engineer for decades, and I will, if necessary, send you specific time references in those videotapes to the lawyers for applicants, including but not limited to Bell Haven, thanking Mike Strange for pointing out mistakes, all right? And another one of our members—
Thank you, Nan. Thank you, Nan.
—was an architect of the Capitol.
Can you send us an additional commentary? Remember, we're headed toward another public hearing, and so there is additional—
I'll be happy to send you another commentary, but I do just want to stress that there is this issue about pending ordinance, which is immediate, which is why my letter didn't touch on any of the other issues.
I understand.
All right. Thank you.
I don't know, I apologize, I don't know why this light's going on. Looks like somebody playing with it.
This, this all might be just—
Suzanne, Susan?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I am too, am a member of the Planning Commission, but here in my personal capacity—
Your name?
Susan Stewart.
Thank you.
So today you seek to rush through legislation to strip the Planning Commission of its authority and to grant that authority to the building inspector. Contrary to the false narrative that has taken hold portraying the Planning Commission as trying to steal power, it already has that authority under current city code. Applicants proposing major, complex, and large construction projects must come before the Planning Commission to present and seek approval of their site plan, lot consolidations, and divisions. The code states, "No permit shall issue without site plan approval by the Planning Commission." Full stop. It further states that the planning commissioners may consider the opinion of the building inspector. Note the word "may." It is important, and the mayor, and, and really the public, understand that the vesting authority in the Commission is not only explicit in the city code, it has been accepted city policy for years. It is also extremely important for everyone to understand that this only became an issue a year ago when your former solicitor, Glenn Mandelis, made it one, as he sought to favor an active application before the Planning Commission in the spring and the summer of 2023. Mandelis took meetings with the applicant, offered concessions contrary to the opinion of the building inspector and the Planning Commission, and drafted a letter sent to the applicant on June 28th that, for the first time in years, did not contain language making it clear that the building inspector's opinions were preliminary. He stated in a Planning Commission hearing on July 20th, July 14th, 2023, that the building inspector's opinion was final. He did this in front of the applicant, who's the subject of the appeal before you now. From that time on, the applicant parroted Mandelis in saying the building inspector's opinion governed, and they reference concessions, your former solicitor, made in private meetings with the applicant. The application, the application has been decided by the Planning Commission and is now before you on appeal. It has been reported that it was not an independent analysis you asked Mr. Walton to make, but rather for him to draft the resolution you had. And it is that appeal which spurred you to push through this resolution on legislation in a rush. I will leave it to the public why the Board of Commissioners and mayor chose this route of rushing through legislation that is effectively, retroactively applicable to appeals now. And one can only draw the conclusion, I mean, why not roll up your sleeves and figure this on the merit? Do you not want to be on the record about this massive development project?
Thank you, Susan.
Can I say one thing of concession and, and of graciousness to you all? You know, there's been a lot said, and when leaders talk about the Planning Commission as obstructionists and being pro or anti-development, it not only cheapens the effort of our individuals, but it also weakens the city's ability to steer the kind of responsible, code-compliant development we'd all like to see. I think you're doing a great job, and thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Hate to cut you off at a compliment. Anybody else? Last chance? Well, then we'll bring it back to the Commissioners. We have one item of action that we, we can take, and that's to act on a resolution before us. The resolution is proposing that a public hearing be held on the subject of amending the code, Section 27082 relating to the building inspector's authority to interpret and enforce Chapter 270 zoning. And as we heard earlier from Max, it also includes, includes that the Commissioners were here commenting at the same public hearing on the proposed amendments to Chapter 236, titled "Major Subdivisions, Consolidation of Lots, Et Cetera." With that, if that goes forward, I don't know, do you want to say anything further?
No, I didn't know if any of the Commissioners had any questions.
With that, the resolution before us would be dated 20th of September 2024, and the, the, the date for the public hearing would be set for 18th of October at 9:00 in the morning. That would be a special meeting, because we have a regular meeting in the afternoon. Is there any, any additional comments?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Just briefly, as my husband, neither my husband nor I is an expert in this area. I just feel what the dysfunction that I've seen, to include watching a lot of the Planning Commission hearings, is not working for the city. I think it's, it might be a good time to allow the building inspector. So far, there have been some mistakes made, but it might be better than what we've been experiencing with protracted litigation, massive legal fees that have accrued to the city, and this, it's not the city, it's taxpayers, and, and every tourist who feeds a parking meter, all of us in the end are paying for all this. So I am in favor of, of, of holding this hearing, and that gives all of us about a month to do more research, to figure out why very few, if any, other towns have vested so much power in a planning commission of volunteers. Some, some have more background than others, but when, whether, whether one loading dock versus two is necessary for a modest amount of real retail space plus a hotel took hours, there's some, and, and an attorney has to babysit this the entire time. We, we need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Anybody else up here?
I, I just reflecting on some of the comments made today, I, to look back to, Mayor, you mentioned that there was discussion on May 6, 2024. There was also discussion and a proposal presented on April 11, 2023, presented by the previous city manager. Both of the April 2023 and the May 2024 actions, there's been no action taken on either of those. And I don't understand why we have not taken any action on those. It seems this is the third time that something has come forward. I don't know if we're just trying to ignore the suggestions and, and recommendations that were made by Wallace Montgomery and the First Pine, and then also through the changes suggested on May 6th. I'm, I'm just kind of baffled at that, that, that those have just taken a sidestep. Just to, to put a little background on this also, and to make understanding of individuals, we're talking about site plan review, site plan review. Just to, to perspective of this, the general purpose of a site plan review include: protection of the architectural massing, composition, scale, and character of the neighborhood; compatibility of new construction and structural alterations with the existing scale and character of nearby properties; preservation of streetscapes; protection of natural resources; and protection of the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community. Those are charges that come from the code, but also are the directive, if you will, for the Planning Commission, that come also from the standpoint of the comprehensive development plan, which is written and developed by the Planning Commission and approved by the, the mayor and Commissioners. Not to put too fine a point on it, but the interpretation of the code many times by the building officials do not reflect those categories. They are specifically connecting the code and applying the code as it is written. This comes from the site plan review, which is the responsibility of the Planning Commission. Also, again, for background information, as was mentioned by one of the comments up here, is that this does not cover everything that is done by the Building and License Department on issuing a building permit. This site plan review is only reflective of minor subdivisions, major subdivisions, and also, following specifically from the code, "No building permit shall be issued for any project or projects that individually or collectively involve one, four, or more dwelling units; two, the development or redevelopment of a parcel of land and adjacent parcel of land in excess of 20,000 square feet; three, a commercial project over 15,000 square feet of gross floor area on which requires substantial renovation or increase in intensity of usage; a development requiring a change in zoning; or five, any other site plan referred to the Planning Commission by the building inspector under a site plan that has been reviewed and finally approved for such project by the Planning Commission." So again, this is not, everything goes to the Planning Commission for a site plan review. There are specific points that outline this. One of the other conditions that was proposed in the CDP, and again, was part of the May 6 proposal put forward to the mayor and Commissioners, which no action was taken on, was also to include any property frontage on the boardwalk, which again, is our, why we're here, the boardwalk and the beach. So again, I, I think we are jumping forward on this. We have two further, two earlier proposals that we took no action on, they seem to have just dried up, and now this is a, a way that, a third proposal that I just don't feel has had enough air in the, in the public to, to, to carry it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else?
I want to basically concur with the comments that Commissioner Gossett has made. He and I are both alums of the, of the Planning Commission, and I, I look at the Planning Commission, just to answer the question by one of the people making a comment, the, the Planning Commission reports to the mayor and Commissioners. And, and they, they obviously have, in, in the charter and, and in, and in our regular ordinances, responsibilities that are, that are outlined and spelled out. But the out, the outcome of that is, I feel, a greater amount, because we're, we're dealing with more, more people involved in the process of, of public, you know, input and transparency. And, and especially, as, as Commissioner Gossett has said, these are not, you know, somebody wanting to, you know, change their fence or whatever, it's, it's large projects that, that have a significant impact on the community. And, and I think the, the thing that, that I, I keep going back to is a, a term which I share with my neighbor, and we, we, we can, we discuss this in terms of what we always call the egg, and the egg is the golden egg, and, and the golden egg is what Rehoboth has in what we are and the characteristics of this town, and why would we want to mess with the golden egg? So that's why it's such a sensitive process and an important process for us to get it right and to take the, take the trouble and, and to select very competent and thoughtful people who, who have a wealth, an extraordinary wealth of knowledge about many topics, not strictly engineering and so forth, that, that bring us to, to a place where we can get a project that meets the needs and, and, and meets the acceptance of the people of this community. And I don't feel this accomplishes anything to make that any better, quite, quite honestly. I mean, we can analyze it further, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to do that, but this is sort of an abrupt change to something that I think works pretty well. So I'm, I'm reluctant to want to take this further. If we do take it further to a, a public hearing, if we feel that that will engage the public more and get the public more involved, so be it, but I'm not feeling it, okay?
Thank you, Bunkie. Anybody else?
Yeah, I guess it's my turn. So, a couple of things, and I'll try and be brief here. So, being new, a couple of things. So one is, for me, this seems to have just come completely out of left field. The last conversation on this topic, which was mentioned here, was in April, okay? And I attended that meeting, that was where the Planning Commission came with Luke Metta, proposed some code changes. Since then, I have not heard really any discussion on that, but really specifically what's being proposed today, which is to take the authority from, away from the Planning Commission. So as a reasonable person, right, I would sit here, and, and it's hard for me, you know, if I take a reasonable person's perspective, it's hard for me to not believe that some sort of discussion had to have occurred amongst the Commissioners that would have resulted in an ordinance being drafted, okay? Whether that did or did not occur in, in executive session, I don't know, I was not in that executive session, but I need you to understand, particularly given the recent FOIA violations, the residents want transparency. So when I look at this from stepping into a reasonable person's shoes, it's hard for me to believe that discussion did not occur at some point that resulted in this ordinance being drafted. And again, I'm not saying that it did, I'm not saying it didn't. You need to understand how a reasonable person's going to look at this, okay? So that's one. The second thing is, again, kind of coming out of the blue, to me, this is a pretty dramatic change. I, look, there, I as well, at times, you know, question why it takes so long, you know, let's just use Bell Haven as an example, why it takes so long for that project to get through the process. I know that the Planning Commission takes a lot of blame, they're not entirely to blame, and I think we, all of us up here know that. That's one. The, the second thing is, that I wanted to, to take that to, is if we make this change, there's significant implications. And I'm concerned, just based on some, you know, really short conversations with the city manager, that they haven't even identified and considered all the implications that are going, going to result from this change. And I would like to see them identify those, assess those, and make sure they have action plans in place to deal with those implications, because there's probably some pretty significant ones. So here we are, kind of drawing it back to, we've got a drastic change that's really kind of been proposed out of the blue, without any sort of consideration of what the implications are. The last thing is, and this is kind of equally concerning to me, and Mr. Janis, I'm, I'm going to kind of apologize in advance for having to go down this route, but I sat here in the Board of Adjustment meeting for Baha Babs. And what concerns me is not that you made a mistake. Everyone makes some mistakes, right? We all do, I do, everyone up here. What concerned me was the, the dialogue between yourself and, and at least one, maybe multiple members of the Board of Adjustment, where they, you know, it was simply, okay, you made a mistake, but you would never acknowledge that you made a mistake. In fact, I would almost qualify your position as almost being obstinate. So the way that this ordinance is being written is that you make the decision, if the Planning Commission disagrees with you, they raise an objection with you, and if you don't agree with their objection, they appeal to the Board of Adjustment. You've demonstrated to me that, I don't know if you can be reasonable, I don't know if I can trust that you're not going to be obstinate in the future, okay? The last thing I'll hit on, and this is really for Max, and I'm going to have at least one, maybe two questions, is, you know, we spoke yesterday about the language, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And you put in the language where the Planning Commission has to abide by the Board of Adjustment's decision.
Yes, sir.
Right? And I think my, not I think, my question to you was, aren't you taking away their rights that they're entitled to under 22, Section B, which is that they can appeal to Superior Court?
Yeah, and my answer, and I'll stick to it, the intent was not to, and it is not to, take away the appeal right to the Superior Court.
Okay. So I think it'd be wise to kind of take that out, because again, I think a reasonable person who reads that would believe that they no longer have that right to appeal to Title 22.
Certainly wasn't the intent, but yes, we can change that language.
Okay, all right. And just, you know, we discussed that yesterday, and I thought we kind of agreed we would take that out. I think I have one more question for you. Just, just clarification, because again, I want to make sure that I understand, right? And again, I wasn't at the executive session, you know, I was kind of told that there is like a stack, and again, my term stack, but there are several documents that you have produced over time advising the Board of Commissioners, and I thought I was going to receive those today after I was sworn in. As you can see, I don't have those, right? So again, it puts me at a little bit, not a little bit, a pretty significant disadvantage because, again, the mayor throws something at us out of the blue, or at me out of the blue, and I don't have all the information to make a decision, okay? So kind of getting to my question to you is, your writing of this ordinance, okay? Is it your opinion that the building inspection should have authority, or the Planning Commission can have authority? Because my understanding from you yesterday is that...
Hold on, hold on, hold on, do not, you need to wait and read my memo, because that's attorney-client privilege, and I don't want it out here.
So I should have it, where is it? And, and again, maybe it's not your responsibility to get me this information, maybe it's the mayor's or Mr. Tedder's, okay? So I'm not blaming you?
I don't even have an email address for that.
I'll stop right there, okay? All right. So I think you know how I feel.
So, thank you very much. You have anything? I...
Go ahead.
Excuse me, I go back to my first two questions. Obviously, I was pretty direct on the first one, and I wanted to focus on whether or not it's appropriate to go to public hearing. I still believe it is, that we should fulfill that, go through public hearings so that we can get input from a greater range of citizenry, so I'm ready for that. The second question I proposed was more questioning whether the content of the proposed amendments are acceptable to take to public hearing. You know, we could just vote on this and go, take it as it is to a public hearing, and at that public hearing, if we chose to, we could modify it and take some things out at that time, as Craig suggested, or we could take out pending ordinance doctrine at that time. I would, I would propose that, because it's rather significant, that I would, if this goes to resolution, I would hope that somebody makes a motion to consider deleting all, all reference to pending ordinance doctrine. So, anyhow, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll, I guess I'll just, I didn't want to get too, too much into the merits of this, because I have more questions and research I want to do after hearing some of the members of the public, but my understanding is, we're not making a change to the code, we're not changing how anything is done. We're clarifying that the code currently does not give the authority to the Planning Commission to make the final code interpretation, that is the building inspector's job, and nowhere in the code does it state that that is the Planning Commission's authority.
To be fair, there's a disagreement in that regard.
Right. And, and I think we've, we've, we've seen legal opinions on both sides of, of the aisle on that. And so, you know, that's how I'm looking at it, that's, that's how I'm approaching it, that we are clarifying the code, we're not making significant changes, we're not diminishing the role of the Planning Commission in, in what they do in site plan review. And in, in terms of moving, moving this forward, I'm, I'm perfectly amenable to taking out the, the pending ordinance doctrine from the resolution. And I, I, I'm going to ask a question, and if it's, if you can't answer it, that's fine. It's been referenced a couple of times that no other municipalities in Delaware grant this authority to the Planning Commission, is, is that accurate to your knowledge?
There are different powers provided to different planning commissions across the states, and different things. It's ultimately, for example, Newcastle County, which I'm familiar with, it has a, what's called a Unified Development Code, and zoning decisions go to the Board of Adjustment or appeal to the Board of Adjustment, and the planning board has what they call subdivision things, and they define what they are in the chapter, and they have final, some final authority over that. There are some jurisdictions that also have a site plan, but it's certainly the majority of the jurisdictions, the large majority of the jurisdictions across the state usually have that power with the building inspector and appeal to the Board of Adjustment.
So that, that fact is important for me. The other thing that I think I've mentioned multiple times is, we, we don't control who is on the Planning Commission. I think we've got a very competent group of people that are educated and well-versed in a lot of areas, but that's not a requirement to be on the Planning Commission. There are educational and other requirements that city staff have to do their jobs, and that's an important part of this that I look at, sort of looking at this holistically. But I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine moving forward, giving this, I mean, we, you know, we've got another month to, to look at it and then hear from the public again, I'm fine moving in that, in that fashion.
Mayor, if I may...
Yes.
Whatever happens of moving forward or not, depending on this, I'm extremely disappointed that there was not an agenda item report for this particular topic that provides some background, some purpose, and all of that nature. This has been discussed by the representative of the attorney, but nothing has been presented in writing to any of us or to the public. So I think that this was a policy that was developed, to my knowledge, we've not put it in writing, but this has been what we have been doing, so I would ask that an agenda item report outlining all the specifics of what goes forward, no matter when or where, be provided to not only the Commissioners but the public. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, is there anybody that would make a motion in a second? And again, it's in the vein of adopting a resolution, setting a public hearing relating to the building inspector's authority to interpret and enforce Chapter 270 zoning that's before us, with the, the date of 18th of October, 2024, 9:00 a.m., and if you so desire, removal of all references to pending ordinance doctrine.
Mayor, if I may, I also express a frustration with that. That is the same day as our, as been mentioned, our regular meeting, and with such an important topic as this, to restrict ourselves to a maximum of five hours discussion between 9:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., and then another five hours of what have you, depending on the agenda for that afternoon, I think that that is not only taxing to the Commissioners, although we're paid a lot to be here, that the, that also is unfair to the public. So I just caution about making that determination. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody?
Well, just to respond to Commissioner Gossett, I, I think Mayor Mills was dealing with constraints of people's travel schedules, so he, he didn't particularly plan to hold it, October 18th at 9:00 a.m., but it was the one date that would allow the most, if not all, board members to be present.
My concern still stands. Sure. So, will entertain a motion, or delay dormant?
Mayor, I move a resolution by the Mayor and Commissioners of the City of Rehoboth Beach, proposing that a public hearing be held on October 18th, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. on the subject of amending the municipal code of the City of Rehoboth Beach, Delaware 2001, Section 270-82, relating to building inspector's authority to interpret and enforce Chapter 270 zoning, deleting all references to pending ordinance doctrine that's listed in today's draft.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ed Schonowski, and a second by Commissioner Suzanne Good, to adopt a resolution before us relating to the building inspector's authority to interpret and enforce Chapter 270 zoning, such public hearing to be held 18th of October, 2024, at 9:00 a.m., and including the deletion of all references to pending ordinance doctrine. Is there any further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Commissioners, Commissioner, Commissioner Good?
Aye.
Commissioner Schonowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Gossett?
Nay.
Commissioner Markert?
No.
Commissioner Thier?
No.
And the mayor votes yes, then we've got a 3-3 tie, so the motion does not carry. That's it. Thank you, though. Thank you to everybody in the public that spoke.
Mr. Mayor, may I be excused?
Yes, sir.
May I be excused? May I be excused?
Oh, may you be, absolutely. Thank you, Max, for your efforts on this. With that, we'll move to, now we're going back to our regular schedule. The next item of business is number 11, departmental reports. We've got Public Works Water Department here, and Mr. Downs, I think you're up. Do you want to introduce anything? Oh, oh, you are, okay.
Anne, if you wouldn't, thank you. Afternoon, everyone, and I want to thank the Water Department, the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent for being here. If there's any questions that I'm unsure the answer, I am going to defer to that. So, talking right today about emerging contaminants to them, or PFOS and PFOA, I'll go into them more in detail as I go on. The picture that you see there is the Lynchwell Facility, which is near Epworth Church. So, this slide I have here was taken, and this text was copied from epa.gov/pfos. So if anyone has, wants to read more about it, it's, there's a lot on the EPA website, and this also was embedded in the agenda. So I'm going to, I'm going to read this, what the EPA has learned so far. PFOS are widely used, long-lasting chemicals, components of which break down very slowly over time. Because of their widespread persistence in the environment, many PFOS are found in the blood of people and animals all over the world, and are present at low levels in a variety of food products and in the environment. PFOS are found in water, fish, air, and soil at locations across the nation and globe. Scientific studies have shown that exposure to some PFOS in the environment may be linked to harmful health effects in humans and animals. There are thousands of PFOS chemicals, and they are found in many different consumer, commercial, and industrial products. This makes it challenging to study and assess the potential human health and environmental So next slide was also from the epa.gov website, and as you can tell, just by looking at the header, and this was taken last week, there's a lot that's not known about PFOS. What we don't fully understand yet. EPA researchers and partners across the country are working hard to answer critical questions about PFOS, how to better and more efficiently detect and measure PFOS in our air, water, soil, and fish and wildlife, how much people are exposed to PFOS, how harmful PFOS are to people and the environment, how to remove PFOS from drinking water, how to manage and dispose of PFOS. Next slide, I've borrowed this from Delaware Rural Water Authority, and they are a nonprofit organization, there are rural water authorities across the country that support water and wastewater professionals. The Water Department goes to classes there for their continuing education, and they offer technical assistance there, they're, they're a big help to us. So again, this slide was borrowed from them. So PFOS, and PFOS, it should be PFOA history. Category of manufactured chemicals used in industry and consumer products since the 1940s. Resist heat, oil, stains, grease, and water. Do not break down in the environment, are immobile, moving through soils and contaminate drinking water sources. Bioaccumulate in fish, wildlife, and humans. And it's noted that 98% of Americans have PFOS, some form of PFOS in their blood, and that's from the CDC. So I'm going to go a little further of future max contaminant levels. There is no max contaminant level yet for PFOS, there will be in 2029. So, the, there's the, the two main ones are PFOA and PFOS. There are 29 altogether that are, that are, that we measure for. And the, as you can see, the final MCL in 2029 will be four parts per trillion. Now, if you look in, in context with that, our chlorine MCL is four parts per million, our lead is 15 parts per billion. So we're talking a thousand, excuse me, a million times more sensitive than the test for chlorine. So the final MCL, which will be enforceable, will be four parts per trillion, also is nanograms per liter of both the PFOA and PFOS. And there are other compounds that are measured, and, but these, these are the main two. And the others, there are formulas that are used to determine their max concentration, but for, for now, this was, you know, the, again, these are the main two, and the ones really need to talk about. In 2016, the EPA put out a health advisory, that set of 70 parts per trillion was going to be the, the MCL. And anything over 70, they are recommending, informing the, your state water authority, and taking action to correct. In 2022, the EPA lowered that from 70 to, as you see, four parts per trillion. This slide is also borrowed from Delaware Rural Water Authority, and this talks about what's required going forward. Must monitor for the PFOS compounds. We have three years to complete initial monitoring by 2027, and we are currently monitoring. Must provide public, excuse me, must provide public with information on the levels of those compounds in their drinking water, beginning in 2027. We're going to put these in their, in our CCR, Consumer Confidence Report, next year. Systems have five years until 2029 to implement solutions if monitoring shows levels above the MCL, which, again, was four parts per trillion. And in 2029, systems that have a PFOS in their drinking water above the MCL must take action to reduce the levels and provide notification to the public of violation. So I apologize, this isn't the best slide, but it is a map of our current, current water system. system. It, obviously, the city of Rehoboth is on it, north shores, and we provide water in bulk to Dewey Beach, and the, about half our customers are outside of city limits, going north, almost to Walmart. And all of our wells are outside city, are outside city limits. I'm gonna talk about the wells a little bit now. So we have Lynchwell, which is near Iron Hill and Epworth Church. There's four wells there that combine into the, into Lynchwell, and that water is treated, actually has granulated activated carbon, which I'll talk in a little bit, which does treat for PFOS. The four wells combined, as they go into Lynchwell, can actually pump more than the 1,200 gallons a minute. But because of constraints with the wet well, if we pump more than that, we pump the, pump the wet well dry and could actually trip, trip the breakers for the, for the well. Well 7 is near Breeze Wood, and that's about 800 gallons a minute, and well 8 is also about 800 gallons a minute, and that is near Warrington Road and Healthy Way, where Arbor Lynn Development is, and BB has a large new complex. So these samples that were taken, and the PFOA level was 6.2 in the Lynchwells. Now, later this year, we are going to increase our filtration ability, because we do have four, four granulate, excuse me, tanks with granular activated carbon, so we are going to increase that this year. Well 7 and 8 do not treat for, we don't have the ability there to treat for PFOS and PFOA. Again, well 8 is by the BB complex, and well 7 is in Breeze Wood Development. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the technologies. The, the main ones being used are the top three, granular activated carbon, anion exchange, and reverse osmosis. The other two are usually for portable or smaller systems, and they're more novel in approach. And again, this slide also was borrowed from Delaware Rural Water Authority. My predecessor and I went on a American Public Works Association outing in June, and part of it was touring a facility at Newark, Delaware. Was very, very impressed with it, so afterwards arranged a tour of it. It was in the end of July with the city manager, assistant city manager, the assistant water superintendent, the fours, four of us went there, met also, we invited Louis BPW, they went with us or met us up there also. And that tour was given by the water ops superintendent, Narik Niemeister, and the, the mayor was there, as well as the city manager and their public works director. So this is a state-of-the-art facility for the PFOS removal. It's only the second one built like it in the, in the country. The first one built is in Rhode Island, and you may not be able to see the tanks, the tanks are made by Calgon. They're the main player in this right now, both with the tanks and with the filter media. The, this was, it's not online yet, the construction was completed a few months ago. I spoke with the water ops superintendent, and it will be online shortly. So the contract was awarded there in September of 2023, and again, they just finished the, the construction on it. Cost of this was $3.3 million, and it, the capacity is 2 million gallons a day. The, the way they have these four tanks, there's, as I mentioned, there was the granular activated carbon, and the anion exchange are the two main methods of removal. So these have both, kind of getting the, the best of both worlds. The anion exchange is very efficient, very expensive, but the media lasts longer than the granular, granular activated carbon. And the Panoni was the contractor that designed this facility in Newark. So, next steps, considerations, as I see them. You know, 2029 will be here fast, and that's when the four parts per trillion will be enforceable. We need to start planning and construction on it quickly. Couple reasons, it's the right thing to do, and as time goes on throughout the country, there's water systems that'll be competing for potential limited physical resources. You know, the filtration media, the tanks, again, Calgon is the main, main supply, there are others, they have the greatest expertise in it right now. Funding, there's a class actions settlement that the, the city signed on recently. The Water Capitalization Fund, potential loans and grants for the, for the, you know, for construction. Again, that was $3.3 million for that, and if you don't mind, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back, I'm gonna go back to the, to this slide. As I mentioned, that all the wells are outside the city, city limits. Well 7 and well 8 are about 3/4 of a mile apart. So there would be two things that we could do, and discuss this at length with the Water Department, as well as Bob Palmer from Beacon Engineering. We could put treatment both at well 7 and well 8 for this, or we could potentially pipe from well 7 to well 8. It would be all on public right of way. Some of it could be horizontal directional drilling, a lot of it, some of it won't be, we really don't know yet. But that was probably be more costly, but I think it would be the preferred method, because you just have one point in which you would only have to build one filtration plant then, at, at well 8 vice 2, at well 7 and well 8. So the cost for it, really don't have a good idea right now. Again, it was $3.3 million for, for those tanks. It would be definitely upwards of 5, of 5 million for us, either, either way, whichever, whichever route we took. Either, either the tanks, or, again, I, I believe the preferred method would be to pump the water from well 7 to well 8. So then all you would have at well 7 would be a wellhead, just disable the, all the treatment there, and just have the two treatments, one at our Lynchwell and one at, one at 18. So, need to find, couple things, engineering firm for design on this, and there will be in, this will be in CIP for 2026. You know, I'd really like to get it where we have it built within, you know, two, three years, three years at the, at the outset. I was gonna talk about a few other water initiatives, but before I move on to those.
The, the scale of the, of the Newark project, is that in the scale of what we would need, or is it bigger, smaller?
Probably a little more, because that's 2 million gallons, but they're not using a lot of, like, some of their tanks where they have the anion exchange, their tanks are only about a third full, and I think they said they were a half or 2/3 full for the, for the carbon.
Okay. Can I ask a really dumb question?
There's such thing, Commissioner.
No, I, I, I think, is bottled water filtered to, to these standards?
They have a lot different regulations, and I'm not sure.
I don't know, I, I'm just curious, if people think that they're, you know, that they're somehow, like, it's better, they're, you know, they're concerned about this.
That's the perception, but I, but I read recently that there's one bottled water that had PFOS or PFOA that was, I think, 9.8 parts per trillion. So probably depends on, on the bottled water itself.
Right.
And, and the one, I think it's called, I've, when I used to do Bikram yoga, I used to have it, it was Waimea Hawaiian volcanic water. That has never been found to have any PFOS in it, ever.
It's hard to get.
I got a couple of questions. Sorry, I have a couple of questions. So, we need, so you mentioned, I was catching the part, you know, pumping between well 7 and well 8. What about the Lynchwells? We, it looks like we would need to treat those as well?
We have four tanks there right now with the granulated carbon, when that facility was installed several year, quite a few years ago.
Okay.
So we'd have to upgrade that.
Okay, all right.
And.
It sounds like, and again, not, I don't want to get into any sort of technical details there, but if I was to look at this from a high-level perspective, we have to execute this project. With the Lynchwells, some infrastructure, so to speak, is already there, but we'd have to spend money to do some sort of upgrade or enhancement to that infrastructure to treat the water. Is that kind of a reasonable statement?
Yes, it is.
Okay, perfect. And then for well 7 and well 8, it would be, you know, from the ground up, we'd have to build it from the ground up. Again, so to speak.
That's correct, as far, because there's no tanks, like you saw the, like I had the picture of, again, those are massive tanks, they're probably 25 feet high.
Okay.
I don't believe we would need ones as large, but we would have to, again, at the minimum at well 8, put it there, or well 7 and 8.
Okay. Estimating roughly, you know, 5 million in total, you said that we're gonna need to spend some money in 2026.
Yeah.
So, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, go ahead.
Yeah, so, of that, let's say it's 5 million, right? What are you thinking you'll need to spend in 20, and again, hate to put you on the spot, but 26, 20, you know, how would that get split?
Actually, frankly, I think 5 million is gonna be light, because those tanks were 3.3 million. Bob Palmer and I were thought, were talking, it could be minimum of 1.2, maybe 2 million, if we go the route of moving it from 7 to 8. Could, could be more. And upgrading the well 8 wouldn't be as, as expensive. It, it depends when we, now, a lot of the design, especially because it's tanks, Calgon is involved with, and is heavily involved with, with this, you know, when, if we were to purchase the tanks through Calgon, which can, I, I really don't have a good feeling, but it's something that, you know, when we get more information and, you know, it'd be more about hiring an engineering firm for the design, it's something I'd really like to move on quickly.
So I, I just, and, and again, I apologize, but, and I don't want to get in, at this point, I don't want to get into details, what 7's gonna cost, 7, 8 cost versus 4, just kind of total, I had heard 5 million, then I just heard a number of like 1.2, so what do you think the total cost of this project is gonna be? And be conservative, right? I mean, be conservative like.
I'll be conservative and say 10.
10 million? Okay, all right. You mentioned in, I don't want to say you mentioned, right, in the presentation, you identified funding sources, okay? So, and again, at this point, I'm really kind of looking for a net-net. It sounds like there might be some funding sources, so if this total project is 10 million, how much is the city gonna, well, I don't want to say the city, how much is the water utility gonna have to come up with of that 10 million?
Okay, I'm gonna defer to city solicitor.
If I could just add one thing that might be helpful, Commissioner. There's a bullet there that says class action settlement. Unfortunately, this is a nationwide problem, PFOS contamination across the country. There are some pretty substantial, substantial class action settlements consolidated in the district court for South Carolina. For example, 3M Company is an alleged polluter, they, there's been a settlement approved by the district court judge for over $10 billion.
B, I'm sorry, with B?
Yes, with a B.
Okay.
Billion. Also, DuPont, there's a settlement that's been approved by the district court judge that is over $1 billion. The city has submitted claims in both of those cases, and I, I'm told that perhaps those claims could come back later this year or early next year. So that'll give us a little more idea of what the funding sources look like. There will also be several other settlements that are in the pipeline.
So, I think you know my next question, which is, okay, settlements, what do you think we would get in total from those settlements?
I don't want to speculate on that, but I can get that information for you, for a future meeting.
Okay. Yeah, if you could get that for the next meeting, that would be great. Okay, so, just, I mean, at this point, and again, I'm putting you on the spot, but really just have no idea. Okay, and, and I shouldn't phrase it that way, you don't know, and you don't want to guess, I don't want to use the term no idea, because it's probably not right. Okay, so of the, back to the 10 million, what do you think the length of this project is to do all this work? 26, 27?
I'd like, yeah, I would like it to be done by the end of 27.
Okay.
The, of fiscal year 27. Could be, again, the, pumping from well 7 to well 8 will probably cost more and take longer, but in the long term, I, I think it's the best solution.
Yeah. So, we're starting to head into, you know, budget season here, believe it or not, right? So, and again, I'm probably, I'm looking at you, but I'm talking at the city manager, we really need to get an idea of, of what we need to spend, not only in 26, but in 27. Conservative estimates. I mean, I think these types of dollars, and I think anyone who's sitting in the audience who, or is listening online realizes that if the city has to come up with, you know, millions of dollars, you know, there's only a few ways we can do that. I'm not gonna, you know, get into what those are now, but again, being transparent with everyone that's out there. The last question I would ask is, when were these, you know, regulations introduced? I don't want to say they were introduced, but when was, I'm trying to think of the right terms here, but when was it mandated that we had to do this?
It was in April of this year.
April of this year, okay. But I suspect that preceding that mandate, there were probably, you know, nothing happens quickly, right? There are probably discussions going on within the government, whoever sets this, that they're gonna do something.
Yes, and frankly, we, since we have been sampling for a while, in the EPA's eyes, we are considered a large water system. And because of that, we'd been sampling for a while, and that allowed us to enter into one, I forget which one, but one of these class action settlements, since we, we had been sampling for about two years?
Okay. The last thing I would, I would, and I apologize, just the last thing I would say is, I'd really encourage you just be as forthcoming as possible at any time related to this project. I mean, it's a substantial project, it's a lot of money. I mean, it's a substantial project, it's a lot of money. The, the more we know, the better, right? So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I did want to say, you know, obviously, it seems like it's kind of coming out of nowhere. About five years ago, the EPA started taking the PFOS and PFOA, which was an unregulated contaminant, and discussing making it a regulated contaminant. Initially, it was going to be a combined action level of like 14 parts. Denrec actually came out at that time and tested two of our wells untreated, which I personally didn't think we were going to have a problem with it, just because there's not the industry in this area. Kind of shocked by the results that we did have. We did change the way we treat at the Lynch well facilities, they tested two of the wells, excuse me, at that facility. Before, with the four vessels, basically, half the water goes into one absorber train, half goes into another, and we're running the water equally, you know, in parallel, if you will, through each of the carbon vessels. We switched that process up to make it in series, and it did lower our treated numbers, but, you know, we thought we were going to be within that first proposed level. Kind of very quickly, they went from talking of like 14 parts per trillion down to that, you know, that action level of, you know, four, which kind of caught everybody off-guard in the industry, honestly, certainly us, because I thought we were going to be okay. Henry touched on it, that we do have those carbon vessels, excuse me, at Lynch wells. They're currently, they're 20 pound, 20,000 pound vessels, currently halfway filled. It's in the CIP for this year, and within the next few months, we are going to be replacing that carbon and filling them completely full, and running them in series. So I do expect, you know, that, that testing level at Lynch wells to come down considerably. And, and as we move forward with the engineering, you know, we may, in the future, have to change, you know, the type of media in those vessels. But, you know, we are obviously going to try to get as low as we can with what we currently have, and then, you know, moving forward, we're obviously going to have to treat well seven and well eight in some fashion. But I just want to, you know, so everybody knows, we are doing what we can with what we have existing, and trying to get those levels at the Lynch well site down.
Yeah, so, and, and I appreciate that, and I, I really appreciate you coming up and, and saying that.
Right.
Sharing that with us, right? Because it is important, and I, and I know everyone is doing everything that they possibly can, I just have one follow-on question.
Yeah.
So you've mentioned refilling them with carbon, treating them, is there an expectation with just that, that you'll get below the four?
I believe so. What we saw in our initial testing, the way that we were filtering, when we switched to running them in series, so it comes through one vessel, out into the next vessel, it basically cut our treated numbers in half. So if we increase the carbon, you know, double the amount of carbon, and then treat in that same way, I expect to see that level drop by half again, which will, you know, we're currently putting out a 6.2, hopefully we'll be down below three.
When do you think you'll, when do you think you'll know?
We have to send some samples of the current carbon out to Calgon Carbon, but we do have a contract with them to exchange that carbon this winter. So come spring, you know, that plant will be back up and running with the new carbon, and we, we do testing after that. So I would say late spring, early summer, we'll have a better idea what that plant is putting out.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm not, you know, I, one of the things that I'd like to understand is, right, and we're talking about a $10 million number, and again, if I'm understanding correctly, a $10 million number to do Lynch seven and eight, okay? What I'm hearing is we might not have to do Lynch. Is that what I'm hearing?
We're not going to have to do the extensive work at Lynch. I mean, we may get there with what we're currently doing, that's kind of the goal, it's, you know, my goal, to try to get there with current budgeting. But there again, you know, it costs near $200,000 to replace that carbon. We're going to have to budget probably to replace that carbon possibly twice a year moving forward.
Okay, so, and I apologize.
Twice a year, no, no.
Yeah, so, I don't want to, you know, we're getting into a lot of detail here, and I don't want to get into any more detail. What I'd ask is that basically come back with, it sounds like there's, you know, multiple paths this could go, which could potentially be 10 million or something significantly less. If it's significantly less, we're going to need to spend maybe a half million dollars replacing carbon. If you could, and again, it's a lot of money, so we gotta, you know, think about how we're going to fund this next year. Need the details, right, particularly the monetary details. So again, I'm looking at you, but I'm, I'm really talking to the city manager. As quickly as you can outline all of this stuff and put numbers next to it, as well as a timeline, I would appreciate it.
Another question, is there the physical land at Warrington Road to construct such a facility?
At Warrington Road, yes, there is.
Okay. And that, that's, Breeze Wood is, does not have the space?
Not as much as Warrington Road. That was also one of the considerations for pumping to well eight.
Is there concern at all with wellhead intrusion at Warrington Road with the new BB hospital or medical facility there? Is that being monitored at all, or?
Well, our wells, you know, we do, the, the wells are sampled, and.
Have we noticed any difference since BB's opened there, in the, last year or so?
Uh, no.
May I ask quickly, the digging currently going on on Holling Glade Road, very close to the Lynch well, is that, is, does that have to do with any of this sampling?
Uh, no, they're, they're actually putting in a mixed-use and bicycle path, kind of connecting the sidewalk there.
Thank you. Yeah, okay, yeah, I was, I was biking past there, and it got underway, I think, a couple days ago. Okay, thanks.
Francis, did you have a question, the, quick, thank you?
Hi, Frances Kellher, a couple of questions, and I'll, I'll throw out my questions, they're all around this slide and the previous slide, the map. But, I mean, the one thing I noticed was well eight is actually below the, the maximum limits of, of what you had listed up above. So they're below the four parts per trillion, where I had noticed that the Lynch well, you know, had that higher number. I wondered if you have been able to monitor the four different wells, or is that just a, you're only able to look at, at that for the combined four wells? And then I wondered why you didn't have the PFOS number up there at the Lynch well, too. But, so it just seemed like one of our wells is below the limit of, maximum limit, and maybe wouldn't need to, wouldn't need to be treated. Oh, okay, and wouldn't need to be treated, but I'm just asking. And then I wondered if you had any idea why the PFOA, the PFOA was highest in the Lynch well? And wondered if there was like one bad apple of the four wells, you know, that could be driving that 6.2 P, parts per trillion? And then I, I had a kind of a question about Newark, and how high are their contaminant levels? And, you know, what's their power, if you will, or ability to then remove? And, you know, how does it stack up or compare to where our, over the max four parts per trillion levels are? So how does our 6.2 and 5.5 numbers measure up with what Newark's got to remove?
Excuse me, as mentioned, the four wells are combined at Lynch wells. The levels, the pre-treating levels were much higher than the 6.2. As Robert mentioned, we're going to change our filtration method in series, and, and adding the amount of carbon to lower, to lower the PFOA. The PFOS, I believe, was not either zero, very close to zero, that's why I didn't, I chose not to put it in this slide. And just because well eight is at 3.3 parts per trillion now, we can assume it's going to stay that way. You know, we're, we'll be monitoring, but, and also, if we pump from well seven to well eight, we, we'll be treating at well eight. We've seen where levels can rise quickly and then go back down, and we really don't have a good explanation for that. So we need to be conservative, and with the due diligence, assume that we need to treat at well eight. And as far as Newark, I don't recall what their levels were, but they were, they, they were, they were definitely higher than ours. And they, and this plant that we had, the four of us had toured, is not online yet.
So the reason I was asking about what Newark's levels were, is that maybe we won't need as robust or big, or as, you know, much of a, you know, system as to purify, or to remove the contaminants as Newark. So maybe it'll cost less.
Thank you, Francis.
Thank you, Francis.
I hope it does cost less. The, the 10 million was a, you know, I was asked to be conservative, that's a conservative number. I, I hope it's, I hope it is less than that.
Tom?
Tom Gainer, property owner. Commissioner Teer, I think, thank you for all these questions. Do we have a presentation template for the department heads? Because one of the things that was puzzling, as to play the reasonable man in the audience, listening to all the jargon, it was incomprehensible, and that's no disrespect about the presentation, very detailed, it's obviously prepared with some earnestness, but for a general homeowner, all I heard was $10 million. And then, there's no connection to a budget, and this kind of goes to what I asked you a month ago, when you gave your budget report, there was no, there was no discussion about the, the lifeguard station, there's no correlation about the budget related to the lifeguard station, there's no correlation about what overage we are. We're here to listen to money. You know, that's fundamentally what the fiduciary duty is of the folks up there. So no criticism to, to you, but, you know, I, I'd see, like to see a little fewer videos and less coffee, and more templates that actually are helpful on what's the problem, what's the solution, what's the mandate, what's the requirement, what's the cost? And create a presentation template for these departments that actually present some kind of context for us, because this is a floating agenda item on a, you know, on a link, on the agenda, that just had this presentation floating in midair, which had no correlation to any of the financial data over the course of the last year. We've gotten improper tax increases, we've gotten improper budgets, we have no idea what the financial, you know, health of the city is. All we know is that, oh, we passed a tax on improper data, but then we had a $3 million surplus. Please get control of this. The, the biggest issue that is, is everybody's criticism of folks up there, there's no coherent economic plan, there's no coherent economic agenda, and there's no data that makes, that seems to make any sense, or is communicatable in a coherent sense. So thank you. But it's up to you two to get everybody else on board. We need coherence, we need better processes, and it's his job to get it done, and I wish he'd start doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Heidi, are you commenting on this topic?
Heidi Nastrom Evans, I live on Rodney Street, and we're aware that these contaminants are in the water. Are we aware if any practices that we are doing in this area contribute to the contamination? Like, what is the source of the contamination? And can we do anything to stop that? I was reading a, a New York Times article the other day about how farmers using wastewater to irrigate their crops did not realize that they were inadvertently really contaminating and poisoning the land. So it would be good to know the source of the contamination, in addition to the fact that there is contamination. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Anybody else? Alright, Henry, you said you had something else to go to?
Well, I was going to talk a couple other water initiatives, working on, one is the lead service line program, which the water department, we're working with 120 Water, and they will be sending the results to the EPA by October 15th. And if anyone has either a lead gooseneck with a galvanized line, or is unknown, they will be receiving letters in the mail, and water department, you know, will be, has been taking inventory for quite some time on that. The cross-connect program to, which right now is mainly on large commercial buildings to ensure that the, that they have proper cross-connects with their irrigation and their potable water. And another thing I wanted to talk about, the resilience of the City of Rehoboth Beach Water. We're investigating installing two cross-connects with Tidewater Utilities, and that will also be in the CIP for FY '26. I apologize, I don't have a good number as far as what that would cost. I've been discussing that with Bob Palmer and the water department, and with, with Tidewater. Once I do have that information, I'll let you know. I figured it was better to let you know about this now, rather than waiting to have more information. And well six was a well that is in Breeze Wood. It has not been in service since 2017 due to high iron content. And we are looking, the city manager has been working to, with a entity to try to find, we have a potential location to relocate well six that we're currently working on. And again, I'll have more information on that in, in the future.
Henry, what's the rationale for the cross-connect with Tidewater?
You know, not having well six, which was about 800 gallons a minute. And if you take a look at this July 5th, you know, I requested that the irrigation be alternated on alternate days. We lost quite a bit of water in both our water towers, pretty much due to irrigation, and also due to the extreme demand on, on the July 4th weekend. It would be, you know, kind of like, and right after that, Henlopen Acres had a water outage, and we were able to supply them. This would be, if there was a problem where, especially during the summer, where we had a problem with, say, well eight, excuse me, Lynch well that puts out 1,200 gallons a minute, we could receive water from Tidewater.
So it's a redundancy?
Yeah, yeah.
And the lead service line, are we still just taking inventory, or have they, have we started replacing some of them?
No, we're, we're just taking inventory, and then right after that, we have about 6,000 customers in, in, we will be sending out, we have to upload the results, and send out letters within 30 days to the customers that either have lead service, excuse me, we don't have any lead service lines, but we haven't found any, but we have lead goosenecks followed by galvanized lines, which counts as lead. So we haven't been replacing, when we're doing the Maryland Avenue Water Main and Repaving Project, we're going to be replacing the service lines there.
Thank you.
Patrick?
Has there been any forecasting, if you will, with regards to the, our needs or ability to meet the needs of portable water and potable water in the future? In the standpoint of, we're talking the one reduction in irrigation over the 4th of July, but with several new hotels coming online. July, but with several new hotels coming online, larger homes, firefighting capabilities, that type of thing. Are those, are those projections being done to say, do we need to start another well? Or what, you know, what are our needs for the future?
Yeah, that's one reason, Commissioner. I have been looking at a, the relocating of well six, which would help immensely if we're able to do that, as well as the, I'm very cautious in my approach to things, as well as the installing the two cross-connects. So do we need to take a look at, a further look at that? I would think so.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, just, you know, in line, I'm sorry. I don't want to say in line, but just with what Commissioner Gossett said. Yeah, I mean, if we could get a plan, right? I mean, there are several, what I kind of think are potential options out here. Maybe they're not all options. We're going to do the cross-connect, plus we're going to do well six. Commissioner Gossett mentioned, you know, what we would need to potentially supply in the future. It'd be helpful to understand that.
Understand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Henry.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. With that, move on to the, other departmental reports have been submitted electronically, and they are embedded in your agenda. Again, go to the website and you can access those. Board and commission reports likewise. Committee reports received none. Community partner reports, we have electronically received three reports from our community partners, Cape and Lopen Senior Center, Chamber of Commerce, Public Library Report. They are again embedded in the agenda. With that, we move right on to old business, community partner grant recipient reports. You might recall that we had a new application, a new grant application process developed this year, and as part of that, they have to come back at the September meeting and report. Patrick, did they have any criteria?
Yes, it was to meet the needs that were outlined in any of the conditions that were stated in the grant applications as to making progress towards those conditions developed and implemented for the grant recipients. So the funds that were produced in July, the first depending on the amount provided, sometimes was a third, sometimes was a half, sometimes was a quarter. So we're just asking for those individuals, organizations to come back and just an update as to how they have reached or are working towards those conditions set forward.
All right. Thank you very much. So they're in alphabetical order, community partners, historical society, then we'll hear from Main Street, Public Library, and Volunteer Fire Department. Heidi? Yes. There we go. Heidi, go ahead. Introduce yourself, if you would, please.
Hello, I'm Heidi Nastrom Evans. I'm the Executive Director of the Rehoboth Beach Historical Society and Museum. And we received a grant from the City of Rehoboth Beach to help us with our operational costs. We received a grant in the amount of $30,000 for the period between April 1st of this year and March 31st of 2025. On the computer, I've pulled up my grant presentation. I don't know if it's possible to project it so that people could see it. Do I need to make it bigger? Yes. Okay. How do I do that? Oh, I. Okay. And I've shared copies of this, hard copies of this report with the commissioners and mayor and the city manager. And I want to start by thanking the city for the grant. It's vital to the operations of the museum. The museum finances itself through grants and fundraising activities. And as you'll see in this presentation, we have, we offer a lot to the city, and it costs quite a lot. At the end, I have our operational expenses listed. But what I wanted to start off with is thanking you, first of all, for this generous grant and letting you know, in case you're not aware, that at this time, we've received half of the grant. The other half of the grant is still outstanding and is contingent upon us presenting a strategic plan to the city with details on the museum's exhibition plan of the diorama. The diorama refers to Paul Lovett's Golden Age of Rehoboth diorama, which was on exhibit at the museum from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And we have currently extended a memo of MOU to have the diorama on continuous display at the museum and are in the process of preparing a deed of gifts so it can be on permanent exhibition at the museum. It was very popular during the summer. Okay, so moving on, I wanted to show you our progress on our work under this grant, starting off with our strategic planning, moving on to our programmatic accomplishments that benefit the city and our community, and then ending with our operational expenses for which we seek continued funding. So we started strategic planning. We hired the Delaware Alliance for Nonprofit Advancement to help us with that. They gave us a grant to fund a very large strategic plan, but it still cost the museum $12,400 to have this strategic plan done with Dana. The work we've completed so far is that we formed a committee within our Board of Directors, and then our consultant performed a number, performed extensive research of the community. He did interviews with stakeholders, 30 of those. He performed focus groups with members, 17, targeted future members, 21 people that has participated in those focus groups. He did a community survey, and, and then he analyzed that data and, and prepared research findings for us. At this point, the committee has revised its mission statement, the vision statement for the museum, and our core values have been updated. Ongoing work, we're currently working on what's called SWOT, which is analyzing our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. There's going to be a Board of Directors and a staff survey, and then we are going to analyze all this material to come up with identified desired outcomes and strategies, setting goals and performance metrics, and, you know, creating a plan and implementing that plan. Moving on to our programmatic accomplishments, since May of 2024, we had Mr. Lovett's diorama on exhibit, as I mentioned, which included weekly gallery tours given by Mr. Lovett. We had, we had planned three evening lectures. We have offered two at this point, and one is still coming up. And a reception, they were all really well attended, and it was good because it brought in revenue to the museum, which of course we need. Since Labor Day, we've moved the diorama downstairs into the West Gallery with the intention of making it a permanent exhibition. Other fun things that we've done include a goodbye to the Royal Treat Ice Cream Social, which we held on Mother's Day or right around Mother's Day. We've held several Those Who Led the Way events this year, including one during Pride Month, which was a panel discussion with Murray Archibald, who's on our board, Fay Jacobs, and Mark Purpura. We hold walking tours of Rehoboth, including a spunky women of Rehoboth walking tour. We're developing an LGBTQ+ walking tour and a walking tour of African-American history in Rehoboth. We had a partnership with the Lewis Public Arts Committee surrounding the Paul Daniel Sculpture Exhibit at George H.P. Smith Park in Lewis, and we offered kids classes there. We had a book signing in partnership with Rouseabout Books. Local author Ethan Jowella came and talked about his book, The Same Bright Stars, which is about local restaurant culture in Rehoboth. We had an acoustic jam with Terry Plowman, which was very well attended. We had a dinner party benefiting the Rehoboth Beach Museum at Chesapeake and Maine, very generous of Mariah and Sam to hold that for us. The proceeds of that event went towards their overall sponsorship of our beach ball. We held a piping out event on the boardwalk on September 2nd, celebrating the end of summer. And then we just had our annual beach ball fundraiser, which is our largest fundraiser of the year, where we really count on getting everybody out to help us raise funds to keep going for the next year. And it was really well attended, and I, some of you came to that, and thank you for that. Right now, we're having a needlework exhibit. Last night, we had a reception for that, and we have a tea coming up on September 29th. We are also having a really interesting talk on September 26th, you might want to come to, about Avery's Rest, which talks about our ongoing knowledge of colonial life in Rehoboth and how archaeology is revealing that more and more diversity about what we know about who was here in addition to the Avery's. Now, they've unearthed burials of three African people in addition to the native burials that we know to exist on that site, which is on Thompson Island, so very close to home here. We're going to have a fright night at the museum with the Sea Witch Festival. In November, we have the Delaware Beach Life Photography Exhibit and our annual members event. And another thing we've been doing related to our work with the city is restoring and adding lighting to the beautiful Dolly's sign, which moved from the boardwalk to the museum and now makes the museum much more visible to people when they're crossing the bridge into the city. And now it will be illuminated at night as well. So a lot has been going on at the museum, and we're excited about that. But we also want to let you know just about our significant operational expenses, which you help fund and which we hope you will continue to fund and hopefully give us more funding in the future as well. You can see that our payroll is increasing here from $53,000 in 2023 to $56,000 in our projected 2024 expenses. Moving down to look at, you know, what it takes to operate our building, those have increased from $23,000 in 2023 to $37,000 projected for 2024. So that is my report, and I thank you again for your generosity and your grant. And I welcome any questions you have about our progress or anything I've said.
Thank you, Heidi. Any questions among the commissioners? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure.
Great presentation. Tom Gainer, property owner of Rehoboth. Have you thought, or has anybody connected to the museum thought about doing, you know, we really haven't monetized the fact that Biden has been a part of this community and spent, you know, what was it, 30% of his presidency here?
Right.
Having just gotten back from kind of bunkport and some other, you know, summer retreats of, of White Houses, and given the fact that we're so close to the Capitol, it would be great if Rehoboth sort of led the way among some of these fantastic little presidential museums for a, whether it's a show or whether it's something, you know, some permanent exhibit, but just food for thought. It's, it's an overlooked opportunity for monetization that could be a huge boon.
That is a great idea, and it's one that my father has suggested and my partner has suggested, and I would love to know how to get in touch with President Biden to invite him to be, you know, at the museum or let us do a museum exhibit about his life in Rehoboth. But just, if you know how to do that, let me know. You can reach out to me at director@rbmuseum.org. But in the meantime, on a smaller scale, we have been in discussion with local legislators about having programs at the museum about civics and civility, and we're looking forward to doing some local programming on a smaller scale in the meantime until we can get President Biden's attention.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Next up is Main Street. Is that you, Dan? And, and?
Interrupt the process first for just, just a minute. Hi, everyone. And on that last note, we are the nation's summer capital, and so we've got a theme to kind of build off on and move, move this great idea ahead. Hi, everyone. I'm Dick Byrne. I'm president of the Board of Directors for Rehoboth Beach, Main Street. Big congratulations to our new, two new commissioners from Main Street. We look forward to working with you and getting you over to our office and be able to have some dialogue about who we are and some of your ideas and thoughts and critique. Main Street is very, very grateful for the financial support this last year, and we're going to talk a little bit. I'm going to pass it over to our Executive Director, Dan Slagel, to talk about what we've been doing the last few months and how we've been expending these dollars, and then I'll come back and wrap it up with a couple of thoughts going forward into the future. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Manager, and Commissioners. I'm the Executive Director of Rehoboth Beach, Main Street. My name is Dan Slagel. Very proud to tell you, I've just celebrated five years in August, so I hope you've seen a lot of growth, and we're really proud of what we have accomplished in the last five years, at least in my term. So I want to start off by talking about our, with our grant report. So I wanted to start off by talking about our, with our grant report in front of you. And so if I can do this correctly, do I just hit enter here?
I'm controlling it here.
Oh, you are? Okay, so I'll just tell you.
Want to turn it over to them, man? Evan, can, do you have a thumb drive there with it on there?
No.
Okay, well, then I have to control it.
Oh, okay. I'll just say next slide. Okay. As you can see. Okay, I have it in front of me here, too. Okay, so our mission is Rehoboth Beach Main Street is not, is a non-for-profit, volunteer-driven organization whose mission is to foster and promote a vibrant year-round in-town experience in businesses, residents, and visitors alike. This is our mission. We're very proud of our mission, and it is our goal to continue our mission. Next slide. Our goal one is to draw people to enjoy the beauty and experience of downtown Rehoboth Beach. Our goal two is to make downtown Rehoboth Beach an accessible place to work, and goal three is to obtain resources to fuel our mission. Next slide. Okay, I'm gonna, a lot of this I'm going to highlight, and at the very end, we'll have our numbers and our expenditure for this from April 1st. Really, our goal is to draw people to enjoy the beauty and experience of Rehoboth Beach. We're very proud of this town. Our mission is from the, when you cross the bridge to downtown Rehoboth, it's one mile in and one mile across, which does include the residents and our businesses. Next slide. Okay, so here's, so this is our key accomplishments from April of this year to now. We have provided over 5,000, 5.4,000 volunteer hours year-to-date, supporting our downtown initiatives. We are working with the Cape Water Tours regarding possible expansion of the service from the canal dock, publicizing current tours through RBMS newsletter and social media to better inform our residents, because it's important that our residents are involved in our mission. Engaging more boardwalk businesses, we have upgraded memberships from Fundland. Baja Bob's is a new member, and Atlantic Sands increased to our goal. If they're seeing the value that Main Street brings, also the Tiki Hut and Breakers Hotel and Suites. We're planning for November 30th. We're really, really excited about this. It's the holiday stroll, and which, and it also is the day for small businesses, it's Small Business Saturday, to draw foot traffic. We're going to have a holiday display. We're going to have gift bags. We're just going to have all kinds of things for that Small Business Saturday. So also, our strategy is to beautify, honor, and celebrate. Install and maintain floral displays, which we have 110 planters and three city gardens. So we're really excited about that. We also have awarded three sign and awning grants of $500 each to have beautiful signage when you're running downtown to keep it consistent. So we're really, you have to go through Main Street to get it approved and present your signage and pictures. Rehoboth Free, Shorebreak Lodge, and Uncle David's have been the recipients of this grant. We're very proud, too, of the USPS project, coordinating with Representative Blunt-Roschester's office to obtain approval for application to the National Registry of Historical Places. That is our post office. Our goal one, key accomplishments, planning for our community unity dinner to be held on December 8th, restaurant donations of food and beverages for 500 guests, entertainment and community performance groups. Mayor and Commissioners, we'd love for you to join us, and you are invited to serve, if you would like, our community. Secure major donations from Community Bank and lunch for Mission Barbecue to support reefs across America, which is scheduled December 14th. This is dear to my heart. This is across the nation that we have these reefs across America, and we ask for volunteers who would like to lay the reefs, please let us know. Our strategy, scroll up a little bit. Our strategy is to drive interest through marketing and communications. Provide monthly promos for all known RBMS partner with member-sponsored in-town events, promoted member businesses to visitor marketits, markets, maintain constant social media presence via Facebook and Instagram. And I forgot to add this, our newsletter is phenomenal. If anybody has read our newsletter, it has a 60% open rate, which tells me that a lot of people are interested in what goes on downtown Rehoboth. So we're very proud of our newsletter. We have an Instagram reach there of 13,000. The website receives nearly 7,000 unique visitors, and of course, our Google Ads that we started not too long ago is very impressive with 28,000. So it tells you our town is really drawing the visitors. Making Rehoboth Beach an accessible place to work. Scroll up a little bit. Our strategy was to provide solutions that make a measurable difference. This is really what we're proud of, too. We've heard from a couple of the restaurants and other merchants downtown. We worked with the Cape Henlopen School District to secure parking for downtown businesses, employees at the elementary school for the summer season. What I'm working on right now, and Main Street is working on, is to send a survey out by the end of this month to see how the summer was. You know, we want to get feedback. Also, part of that survey will be, did they utilize the parking at the elementary school? Did their employees, the owners, utilize? Preparing, here it is, the survey we've, what I just spoke about. Next slide. Our goal three is obtain resources to fuel the mission. We have a goal three. Our key accomplishments for that is a set of budget work plans aligned with our strategic plan, establish new events policy we've created, initial process to monitor budgeting and oversee financial review, establish new procedures to ensure the accuracy of handling cash and check payments and tracking ticket sales. Automated volunteer interest from linked data to online system, my presentation on seasonal community best practices at a National Main Street Annual Meeting, first time in Delaware Town as a presenter. So I was really proud. I've been asked again to, for next year, it's going to be in Philadelphia, is our conference for National Main Street, and I have been asked to present as be a speaker on behalf of Rehoboth Beach Main Street and for the state of Delaware. Establish a new organization performance management policy. These are all in the process or have been completed. Our goal three accomplishments, strategy, development, new revenue sources, secure new anonymous corporation donation, which we did of $20,000. We have partnered with Dogfish to receive proceeds from two upcoming beer and benevolence nights and two and a new limited release of RBMS beer, which will have our logo on. Strategy, improve current revenue sources, provide quarterly stewardships, reports to all members, and it is very detailed in what we are working with as far as their benefit. Member levels and associated benefits were updated to increase exposure and assistance to lower-level business members and assign ambassadors, which I think is really important with our volunteers, to assign ambassadors to all members and all board members serve as ambassadors. What that means is walking around town, meeting with the owners, with the employees, to see if we're meeting their goals, where for, what we can do to help them. So one of them was the parking. Next slide. And this is our expenditures. Dick, do you want to come up with me? So I think the most important is our grant, which you were so kindly, and thank you very much. We appreciate all your support. So as you'll see here, on the accounting part of it, yeah. So you'll see here, the accounting is about $6,000, which includes insurance. We also did an audit review, and it includes taxes. Administration was about $3,000. Am I seeing that? Yep, $3,000. That includes office supplies. It also includes office equipment. Social media speaks for itself. We do a lot of social media reach out. That includes Facebook, our website, and others that we might use. Then also the labor. The labor includes our social media manager, our program coordinator, and a part-time administrator. Anything you want to add?
Well, let me just add, before we open it to questions, we were fortunate enough, I guess, to meet your expectations with our grant submission last year, so we were not given any conditions. So this is, you know, in general, what we've done with approximately half of the $60,000 for the first six months of the fiscal year here in the city. And it, we would not be able to be doing nearly as well as we are doing without, without these dollars from the city, and so we're very grateful. And looking ahead, we operate with a full board, a volunteer board. We are a volunteer-driven organization. We operate and do most of our work through six committees. Those committees utilize dollars to carry out their work. We already have a draft work plan for 2025 from each of the six committees. Those will feed into our three-year strategic plan that we developed a little over a year ago, and so we are looking ahead already to 2025, and we will look ahead to sharing that plan with you in the coming months as it gets finalized. I'm hopeful that you're looking in a very positive way toward making some funds available again for all of the nonprofits in town. A year ago, I think we already had some of the parameters of the grant expectations because you gave us a December 1 deadline, and that's going to come at us soon as we get into the autumn season. So I hope you're thinking ahead to that. We certainly are, and we're very, very, very hopeful that's going to become a reality again. At this point, we open it to questions.
I want to do a final note. Can I just?
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry, just one final note here. The Rehoboth Beach Post Office restoration is in progress. The RBMS has created a task force to oversee this project. We are still waiting permission from the landlord/federal government to give permission to pursue this officially. The College and Town Awards, please, if you can attend, the College and Town Awards are on Sunday, October 6, starting at 3:00 p.m., and it will be held at Kiwi's Tiki Hut near the, you know, under the Atlantic Sands, 101 North Boardwalk. We also, just in the future, let you know what we're doing in the next couple of months, we're looking at options to gather data that will provide information for pedestrian flow. And I leave it. Any questions?
Any questions?
I had a quick, two quick items. I mean, I think a lot of your programs are, you know, are very worthy, but I think in general, I would look toward your reducing your financial dependence on Rehoboth Beach taxpayers because you benefit from a lot of federal money through Main Street USA. So I hope you'll continue to try to do more projects which generate revenue because down the road, I think, the city, given that you are provided rent for free, well, you know, a location for free, as well as your entire Delmarva electric bill is also paid by the city, I'd just like to see your dependence on taxpayers reduced. My other question is, I am very concerned.
Let me comment on all that first because you make, yeah, you make some very good points, and we're very cognizant of the interests of the taxpayers. I'm one of them, and a number of the people on our Board of Directors, you know, live right in town, and so we have a real concern about that as well. We have not asked for an increase for, I think, four years, maybe five years. So, you know, given inflation, increased costs, you know, we're actually receiving less each year from the city of Rehoboth Beach. Different point, we receive $0 from National Main Street or from any national source of funds. There is a National Main Street organization. They do their own thing. We relate to them when it's helpful to us, but there's not an option to receive funds from them.
Oh, well, at one point, because Sussex County qualified for that, was that, did that somehow change over the years?
No, there's not a county Main Street program.
Not so much county, but because of the metrics of Sussex County, at one point, at least, it seemed like you were, you were never eligible for any federal.
No, no, we do go through an annual certification that all local Main Street programs are able to do. It's a fairly extensive kind of certification. It does help us when we go out for other kinds of grants to other organizations that provide community grant dollars. So we do that, but there's no dollars associated with that.
No federal grants whatsoever the last five years.
Correct.
Okay, I apologize for that. And my other question is, I am very concerned, Cape Water taxis has found its, they simply have to charge a very high fare, like say for the round trip from Lewis to Rehoboth. I know, Dan, you alluded to trying to partner with them. I'd just like to, if you could provide details, how you plan to proceed.
It's really not a partnership, and in the next month or two, and the mayor and I have talked recently about this, I'm going to ask the mayor that you put that on, hopefully the November agenda, not the October agenda. We were asked by the commissioners a year ago if we could help give some thought to how the city dock could become a better asset for the entire city. And we said, sure, we'll do what we can do to help. We're not a consulting firm. We don't go into that kind of work. We're all volunteers, with the exception of our executive director. So we put together over several months a brief report about five or six things that we thought we could do that could be helpful to the city in terms of looking at making that dock a greater asset to the city. And so we've been working at that. It's been slow because it's just difficult. One, volunteers, and secondly, like you alluded, the commercial boat traffic is expensive. So we're not partnering with Cape Taxi.
What is your plan?
We are simply talking with them about, you know, could they utilize our dock? And we'd like to hear, and we're getting information from them that we will simply share with the city, and then the city will have to make sense of how to do that. I mean, one option that came up from Commissioner Bennett last year was that at some point, and he, I'm using Tim Bennett's words, "We don't know how to run a dock as commissioners, and maybe we ought to hire a dock master," for lack of other words. And so we're looking at those kinds of things, not that we will formally, as Main Street, partner with, it's simply gathering information and data that we could feed to all of you to help you better think about that facility.
Well, I wish you luck. They are operating as recently as Labor Day weekend, and they are, you know, dropping off passengers, but unfortunately, the schedule is skeletal because they simply, people are finding the price is high enough. It's a deterrent to most visitors.
Yeah, so we've had them in the office. We have talked with them at length about what they might do, could do. Are there, are there other, well, there are some other boat companies as well. There's one in Dewey, and we've talked to them. We've encouraged them to think longer and harder about utilizing the Rehoboth Dock and giving us some options that we could then bring back to all of you. So it is difficult, and none of us are dock experts, and so, you know, we're kind of wading into territory that we're not, we have no expertise in, and we're simply trying to be helpful to the city.
So can we continue that conversation when we do get, receive your report?
Yeah, absolutely.
Perfect, thank you. Anybody else up here?
Thank you.
Nope. Thank you, Dick. Thank you, Dan. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to the public library. Joe Wade is here. One of your colleagues is L. Darnish.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Yeah, Joe Wade here. Lauren McCauley, the director, is under the weather, so I'm substituting today. She provided the grant letter to the city as well as our actual expenses and revenue for the last two months, the first two months of our fiscal year that started. started July 1. You can see that the $75,000 grant that you guys provide us is towards our personnel expenses, and we have about a $30,000, $32,000 a month personnel expense. So the $75,000 comes in really handy. We do appreciate that, and we've already spent a little over $60,000. As you can see in the the grant letter, this past summer, we had a pretty successful summer. The number of visitors is almost 16,000 in the in the summer, which is, I thought, a fantastic, fantastic stat there, over 15, almost 15,000 circulated items. So the library is very well-used by both the people of the residents here as well as the visitors to to our to our city. You can also see the summer reading challenge, the children's summer program was a success. We had over 120 children participating, and they read almost 2,000 books this summer. So I thought that was a great accomplishment. You know, I'm not sure what else, if you can move down a little bit. You can see we are still working on the renovation, just to switch over gears a little bit, to renovate the building, the library here on Rehoboth Avenue. We're making good progress there, so we're hoping, maybe it won't be this fall or this winter, but hopefully next winter, we'll be able to renovate the the building. So we're looking forward to that, so we can be better utilized by everybody. Does anybody have any questions on the grant information? Yeah, here's our, you can see our expenses for July and August, as well as our revenue coming in. A lot of our revenue comes from the Sussex County and comes from the state as well as the city. The Friends of the Rehoboth Beach Public Library also provides, they have a couple of good fundraisers, and they provide us a lot of money for our programming and our collections. So everything is is running for the first two months of the year, running pretty well. I also have included in here the full-year budget. So you can see, we have about a $600,000 budget, and the vast majority of that budget goes towards personnel expenses. So any any questions?
Any questions of Joe?
Yes, I should probably know this, but the, how does your attendance or visitation, however you want to call it, go with the calendar? I mean, like, if you could just kind of talk.
Right, right. So for the summer months, I mean, having over fif, about 15,000 people, if you think about 10 weeks, it's about 1,500 people a week are coming in and visiting the library. And in the off-season, it's about half. So you can see, it's it's a drop. It drops by half.
A half.
By about half, so 750 a week coming through instead of 1,500 a week coming through in the summertime.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
For coming. With that, we'll move to our. Old Business B. Oh, I'm sorry. Chuck almost overlooked you. Whoever's here representing the fire company, Mr. Simpler? Warren?
Yes, sir. On my way. My name is Warren Jones. I'm the vice president of the Rehoboth Beach Volunteer Fire Company. I'd like to congratulate the two new commissioners, and I hope we have a chance to get together and give you a tour of the fire department next door, what we do and how we do it. And I want to talk about, of course, the grant. The first part, first question we had is, why do we need the financial support and why this fee is needed? In addition, you want us to submit a plan that no longer than 60 days after the first check. First check came in the end of July, by the way. We can't meet that timeframe. And I'll tell you why. Our call volume has exploded. Through the month of August of this this year, from January till August, the end of August, we responded to 573 fire calls and 3,216 EMS calls. We're on a pace to have 800 fire calls and 5,000 EMS calls. Closest we ever came to that was 4,000 two years ago. So it's it's been very, kept us very busy and moving quite along. For those of you, two new commissioners, we stock, staff two ambulances 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Another troubling statistic is from January 1, 2024, to August 31, 2024, 20, we have had other ambulance companies come into our district 86 times. Not all those are in in the city of Rehoboth, but if if you or your family needs an ambulance, and you're waiting for someone to come from Lewis or Bethany or Indian River, that's because we are tied up. We're tied up, our our first two ambulances have been running constantly. We've been getting three, four, and five calls all at the same time. We we have a hard time keeping up with it. We need to staff a third ambulance, at least from May to May 1 to October 1. But we can't afford it. It would cost us $36,000 in salaries alone just for that time period. There's no other way we can put an ambulance crew in the station next door, especially on a 24-hour basis, because the building won't support it. I'm going to jump to fire reports and then I'll come back. We we talk about fire responses at a station one next door. We have no volunteer firefighters who live in the city of Rehoboth Beach. That engine is staffed by people who respond from Dewey, by our members who respond from Dewey, or the Forgotten Mile, or Bay Vista Road, or even Country Club Road, for that matter. So by the time they get in here, staff the engine, and get it out the door, that's what it takes. We start, we we thought we'd start a live-in program, which has been pretty successful in some of the other fire companies throughout the state. In other words, we have firefighters who live in the station and and would be available to run. The only problem is, the station next door won't submit it, won't support that type of operation. The only thing we could do is take the hall upstairs and convert it over to to make it a live-in program and also just for the extra EMS staff that we need. We can't do that because it doesn't meet the building codes and doesn't meet the sprinkler codes. We can't have, the law won't allow us to put a sprinkler, have people sleeping upstairs without a sprinkler system. So that's, that's why we can't do that. We would love to, and we'd love to get that going. We we put together some plans. We had an architect and a general contractor come in to look at remodeling the station next door, to to give us the the facilities we needed to do the two things I just told you about. That cost came out to $3 million to bring that building up to its current standard. We have close to $4 million in commitment right now to to new apparatus coming in, so we couldn't, we couldn't afford to do that. We did try to fund that through a congressional discretionary funding earmarks through Senator Coons and Senator Carper's office, but we were turned down for that. So that's where we are with that particular thing. President Simpler is going to take over from me.
Mike Simpler, President of the Rehoboth Fire Company. Commissioners, welcome. Taylor, good thing we didn't run you off for a busy summer, for your first summer here. So, thank you. What I'm going to discuss a little bit today is about the plan that you guys wanted us to come up with. Part of the plan, which we got our residence location and business locations and numbers from Evan back in July 19, and they were broke down as R1, R2, C1, C2, C3, but they're not really broke out clearly to what exactly they are. With those numbers, we were able to come up with 1,998 combined resident lots or properties and 288 combined commercial properties. With that in mind, with as busy as we've been this summer, we've had joint meetings through the executive staff and others that we've been talking about how we would do it. We know we want to use the same type method that we used for Henlopen Acres. So we've been looking at that. On top of that, through August, not to just be blowing our own horns or sirens, as you would say, Warren, 320 calls, and he lives out in the Angola area. So we're coming, he's coming in from Angola. Myself, 251. And Chuck, of course, 502. So between us, it's 814 fire calls we make in just since January till now. And that doesn't include the other executive officers that are here. You see us out front working on t-shirts, plus we have families, jobs, other commitments that we that we're working on and doing. And to have our ideas all put together right now, we've got ideas of how we want to do it, but what we're doing now, Mayor, is challenge you to help us put a task force together to move this forward. You've currently given us $100,000. You're supposed to give us 50,000 more upon having a plan, and then 50,000 after it's implemented. We're to the point now to where we need you guys to sit down with us and help us finish it out. It shouldn't be put on us as the fire company to go out into the public and tell the public, you're getting taxed, or you're getting this because the fire company wants it. We need it to be a joint effort between both. We should be able to shake hands, make it work, make it work for the whole community. We're currently, right now, our fund, our ambulance drive, we only got a 12% return on our ambulance drive. We sent out 26,000 ambulance subscriptions, 12% return across the board. Currently, we're 75,000 below what we budgeted. On our fund drive, we are currently at 17% return across the board, average of $72, and we're about 125,000 behind on our annual fund drive. Our second fund drive will be going out in the first two weeks of October. That usually brings in another 25% of what we normally ask for, which will still leave us low on the budget. With the budget figures in mind, like Warren alluded to a few minutes ago, we are, we are looking to replace our ladder, which which serves the city of Rehoboth with all the high-rises and areas that we're going to need to reach, even with the new construction coming in. It's replacing a 1989 ladder that state, that is currently held at Station 2, at $2 million. We're currently replacing the engine that is in town right now. It's a $1 million investment. It's a little bit smaller than the one we have for us to be able to get around the busy streets of the city. We also, to talk about ambulance, we have another ambulance coming in midsummer for $457,000. So if you look at that right there, we're sitting at over $3.5 million. You guys can look at our 990s and see that we might have $4 million sitting in the bank, but we've got it spent. If we don't, to do good business practices, we should have at least half of what our company runs on every year put away and saved. The money's not coming in like it used to. Granted, we get money from the state, we get money from insurance, Medicaid pays $190 on an ambulance run. Right now, we charge 1,300 for an ambulance run. And you, and we need to protect the city of Rehoboth, the surrounding areas. And at the rate we're going, when we start having to buy the equipment to replace it, and we don't buy the equipment just because it's the new fancy thing out. I think most of you know that by seeing our equipment. It's older equipment, we just take care of it. And it doesn't meet NFA standards, per se, because of age. So with that, I'm asking for an extension. I'm asking for you, Mayor, to point a task force consisting of three from the firehouse, two from the city, one from the Rehoboth Homeowners Association, one from the Chamber, and one from Main Street, to help us come up with a plan to make this work. Do we have any questions?
Any questions for Mike? I hear you, by the way. Any questions up here? If not, thank you. We'll be in touch.
All right.
Be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Thank you, Mike. Chuck, thank you for coming also. With that, we'll move on to the next item of business, which is Old Business B. Discuss the creation of a task force to develop a mixed-use zoning ordinance and consider adoption of a resolution establishing the task force. Mary Ellen?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon or going into the evening. Mayor and Commissioners, welcome and congratulations. Commissioner Thayer, and good. Pleasure to see you here. So I'm here to present the third and hopefully final iteration of the Mixed Use Zoning Ordinance Task Force. This presentation, a brief one, because it's getting late, will articulate the why this proposal is being brought forward, hit the highlights of the Agenda Item Report and what has changed since the last iteration, briefly describe the attachments, and discuss the consultant Wallace Montgomery's scope of work and cost. Taking a step back, why is this mixed-use ordinance, why is this mixed-use zoning ordinance task force, it's mouthful, work plan being proposed? The first reason is that this issue, the consideration of a mixed-use zoning ordinance and taking into account input from the community and business stakeholders is articulated as a goal in both Chapters 4, the Land Use Chapter, and the Housing Chapter, Chapter 5, and the in the comprehensive, Rehoboth City of Rehoboth Beach Comprehensive Development Plan. This goal is articulated in the proposed resolution as well, which establishes this task force. Specifically, it's to consider adopting a new mixed-use zone or amending an existing commercial zone to allow a mix of appropriately located and designed residential and commercial uses that would provide increased housing opportunities on individual properties within the city's commercial districts without adversely impacting neighborhoods or violating the overall small-town scale of the city, taking into account input from community and business stakeholders. Further, the development of a mixed-use zoning ordinance was also identified as one of the top 10 priority action items of the City of Rehoboth Beach Comprehensive Development Plan. There were 88 action items from the Comprehensive Development Plan, and there was an an exercise that the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners undertook after the Comprehensive Development Plan was implemented, and they they were all prioritized, and this was number seven in that list. The second reason is the need for a mixed-use ordinance. While our current code defines defines mixed use and allows it in our fine city, it is not articulated in our code as a separate ordinance that sets a standard for mixed use that also includes design elements such as the one described, which I think is a very helpful and still relevant, the November 2007 Architectural Design Manual. Consequently, we blend the commercial section and the residential section of our code that speak to the commercial and residential elements. What we need is a code that clearly draft, that clear, with clearly drafted provisions that requires mixed use developments to be of a scale and architectural design that ensures compatibility with the surrounding commercial district, and that avoids adverse impacts on the quality of life in nearby residential neighborhoods and allows a blending of residential housing and non-residential uses. Moving on to the highlights of the Agenda Item Report, I'm not going to read the whole thing into the record, but I just wanted to articulate the changes that were made per the discussion of the August 16 Board of Commissioners meeting. As as stated, the in in this, in this report, the goal of this effort, in short, is to come up with a code as for a mixed use to, that will clearly articulate the regulations for mixed use for the for mixed use, I'm sorry, I'm going to say mixed use again. And this is for the commercial district, and the commercial district includes C1, C2, and C3. The approach for this, as as described in in the work plan, is in conjunction with our consultant Wallace Montgomery, and I, in my role as planning and community development director, would facilitate a task force comprised of representatives with applicable building and licensing staff participating as ex-official members. Per the August 16 discussion, these representatives are proposed to now include two representatives of the Board of Commissioners, two representatives of the Planning Commission, two representatives from the builder development community, such as an architect, builder, engineer, planner, or realtor, one representative from Rehoboth Beach Main Street, two representatives who Beach Main Street, two representatives who own businesses in the city of Rehoboth Beach, and four citizens who own property in the city of Rehoboth Beach. This task force is advisory to the Board of Commissioners and to the project consultants. Also, per the August 16th discussion, while helpful, it is not expected that the task force members have particular areas of expertise related to mixed-use zoning ordinance. The professional expertise will be provided by the consultant Wallace Montgomery, as well as the Planning and Development Director and the building, excuse me, and the building and licensing staff. Solicitation of membership is via application, would be via application, which is one of the attachments embedded in the agenda. And should this work plan be approved, this application will be posted on the Civic Plus website. And another document to be posted on the website along with, which is embedded in the agenda, is a mixed-use ordinance task force roles and responsibilities, which will serve as a framework for the task force members, as well as for the community. Membership is by appointment with the mayor, with confirmation by the commissioners, and the task force is time-limited with an end date to be determined, but is expected to be December, September of 2025, so about a year from now. The meetings, it's anticipated that the task force will meet on a regular basis, approximately, what was laid out in the, in the work plan is about, about six times over a 10 to 11-month period. Of course, all meetings will be open to the public in accordance with FOIA. The Agenda Item Report further describes the meetings, which are anticipated to start in November of this year and wrap up in June of 2025. And then a special public meeting to discuss a draft mixed-use zoning ordinance has been added per the discussion of the August 16th meeting, prior to going to the Planning Commission for review, for, for input and recommendation, and then on to the Board of Commissioners for review input, public hearing, and adoption, which is anticipated in September of 2025. And finally, I want to briefly talk about, end with talking about the scope of work and cost, which was also questioned about in the last meeting. So the priority level and taking into account input from community and business stakeholders raises this level, raises this effort to the level of a task force, which requires a significant level of time, energy, effort, and resources. Resources that the city currently doesn't have under its current structure. So accordingly, as with all previous task forces that have been established by the city, we are engaging the assistance of a consultant to assist with meeting organization, facilitation, note-taking, code research, task force meeting follow-up, presentation material, preparation of presentation materials for a special public meeting, and to provide assistance in developing the draft and final ordinance, as well as any additional support as needed. The estimated course, cost, and this is a draft, is $42,360. However, this is an estimated cost, and we are working with Wallace Montgomery to further reduce this price. And additionally, this effort straddles two budget cycles, so it's basically would be half and half. So we have some flexibility within our current budget to pay for the first half, and then we would seek a budget for the second half of this effort in the 2026 budget. So this concludes my remarks, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. We, we have a member of the Planning Commission here. I don't know if you might be willing to share with us real-life experiences of what is the value of a mixed-use task force, or maybe more importantly, what is the value of mixed-use zoning ordinance? And I think you can relate it, Nana, to the 400 block of Rehoboth Avenue, perhaps.
Perhaps, yeah. Well, I, I didn't prepare for this, because I wasn't aware that I was going to make these comments, but I will say that the Planning Commission has confronted this gap, which is that, and that there are criteria and so forth for residential, and there are for commercial. Mixed use is something that I think all the stakeholders in this town are interested in pursuing. This would be for commercial districts. Essentially, it would be a situation that would allow the development of projects such as the one that we very quickly approved in the 400 block of Rehoboth Avenue, that would involve small retail, and above that, in the same structure, residential. Right now, it's difficult to, to fold together the two completely separate sets of criteria. And ever since the, the work on the Comprehensive Development Plan began, we have been trying to figure out ways to allow for mixed-use development in various places and times and so forth. So I can't speak to this particular proposal. I'm not prepared with regard to the details. But in general, I will say that the Planning Commission, I think, would be very interested in pursuing with the other participants that have been outlined, how we can put together a good, enforceable, relevant code section or sections that are really directed to this particular kind of project. So.
Thank you, Nana. Any, any questions of her, or?
Yes, Mayor. Oh, go ahead.
Questions of Nana or me?
You, Mary Ellen.
Yes.
First question is, is who writes the code?
Who writes the code? So this would be a collaborative effort to, to write the code. So the, are you talking about, so we would, myself and Wallace Montgomery, we would draft, so the process, the processes, as I see it, for, for this effort, would be, we would first articulate what I would, what I am calling the main tenets of the code. So we would get agreement on, or consensus on the main aspects of it. Parking, parking, setback, the setback, building height, the, the, struck, the framework, if you will, of the code. And that, that would be brought to the Planning Commission and to the Board of Commissioners for, for review and agreement. So we, so that would be the framework of the code. And so when we would have, so from the framework, then we would start writing, putting meat on those bones, so to speak. So then, that, and that, writing of that would be a collaboration with myself and Wallace Montgomery. And then we would bring that draft to the work group to, to get comments, and we would suss, and then we would continue to suss that out until we would get consensus on that, on, on that language. I, I found that, that process to be the most expeditious, not that it's a rush, but if, because when you start, if you start a, I've, I've done many work groups and done many ordinances, and if you start with the language first, you tend to like, get too scope locked on the language. What I, I feel is most beneficial is you start with the framework and the main ideas. What is your goal? What, what are you trying to achieve with the ordinance? And get buy-in and agreement from, from, from your bodies and from the, from the community on what that is, and what's the intent. And when, once you knew that, then you can start writing the structure to, to the ordinance.
Thank you. So my follow-up question is, I believe you missed the earlier part of this unnecessarily painful discussion on 236 and 270.
I was here.
Oh, you were here. Okay, great. Okay. So I don't have to take any time to go into any more detail. Where I'm going is, I believe a lot of that pain just comes from whether it's vague code, code that doesn't exist, which then results in differences of opinion or differences of, I don't want to use the term opinion, but different views on what the code should be. So if we're going to go down this path of mixed use, which I believe we should, how do we expedite, your timeline is a year. How do we expedite that so we get this code quicker?
You can have fewer meetings. I mean, I, I am...
You don't have to answer that. You don't have to.
I, I think the, the process that I laid out is, is a pretty, it's a robust process. I, I guess I'm somewhat loathe to hurry up the process, because the, how it's described in the, the, the CDP is that there should be community engagement, and that we should engage the business community. And to me, and, and to me, what that's saying is that we should involve the whole community. And so then that's, next step would be to create a task force and to have, have a, a framework of, of an effort. And so I, I think to try to expedite that process, I'm not sure whether we would be able to get input that would be the, that's the intent, as I read it, of the CDP. Certainly, let's say, by meeting for, the group is like, hey, we're, we're good with this language. There's no need, there's no need to meet anymore. Then we don't meet anymore. Then, then we would bring the, the language to the Planning Commission. Excuse me, first, we would bring the language to, for a special meeting, and then, you know, then, then the, the timeline could be shortened if, if the group would come to consensus on, on the language.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Suzanne? Yes. So I'm not in the rush that my colleague over here on the other side is, because I think, I'm not sure it's, there are some merits to mixed use. We have a lot of it. In fact, a hunting lane on Wilmington Avenue is essentially the template that others, including the 400 block of Rehoboth Avenue, are now using. And it's great, because residential doesn't necessitate an elevator, you know, because the retail's on the street level. But my issue, my only issue with this task force, I'm not expecting it to change private, the, the private sector's decisions that much. So I'm not sure it's like, you know, it's going to be all that critical to the city's, you know, functioning. But you have been here a little less than a year as our city planner, and I feel you're fully qualified to carry out all of the, the scope of work that you want to hand to Wallace Montgomery. I was relieved to learn from our city manager yesterday that we have not yet contracted with Wallace Montgomery. I've looked at their website. I'm sure they're very able. But I know because I encounter you with pleasure on the boardwalk quite a bit walking, you're very familiar with our city. I believe you could be the, you know, could lead this task force adequately. So I hope you'll reconsider about continuing discussions with Wallace Montgomery. And because especially, this is priority number seven out of 88. Well, it may or may not be a priority, you know, most people may not view it as a, as a high priority because they feel the private sector takes care of this in the best possible way. So I'd appreciate a reconsideration of, you know, of, warn Wallace Montgomery, there's some pushback on using their services, since I think you, Ms. Gray, would be a great leader for this task force that everyone seems to want to, you know, to form in the, you know, as soon as tonight, I guess. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else up here?
Just a definition question, if you could, under the participants in the task force, we state two representatives who own businesses in the city of Rehoboth Beach. You refer to owners or operators?
The, who, the, the way, the way it's described in the application would be, we refer to the application.
So in my opinion, this would be a business owner, and owners of businesses could rent or own a property.
So, yeah. Yeah, I didn't think of that articulation. So, yeah, if you own a business, right. Yes, thank you for that, yeah, kind of thing. It's late. Sorry. So, yes, if you own a business, right. And so we do have on the application whether you are, own your, own your property, own, own, own the property that your, that your business is in, or whether you're leasing it.
My only concern with that is, over the, the decades, we have had tremendous amount of difficulty getting owners to the table to talk, to understand what's going on. And I, in my experience, that an owner of a business versus an owner of the physical property have two different goals in mind when they're developing their properties. And that a operator of a business certainly has its own priorities, but that doesn't necessarily relate to the individual that's own or going to build a property. So I just caution you in that, for perspective of getting people to be involved.
Yeah. We could always shift that to operator or manager of the business.
Well, sure. And also, well, a further guardrail on that is that the, the membership comes back to you all for review and approval. So.
Anybody else up here? I'd like to go to members of the public, Tom, and then Jan.
I'm Gainer, a property holder. I kind of disagree.
Can you, can you?
Raise your microphone. Yes.
I disagree with the differentiation between owner and operator. An operator's a manager, and owner is an equity holder that has an equity stake. And so it should be people that have an equity stake, that are, that are participants, not managers. Managers have differing, differing viewpoints. But I, and I would also encourage you that we've got to break some of these task forces and committees from the same 12 people that are doing everything in the city. So I would encourage you to think about a broader net, to incorporate other viewpoints, particularly given the fact that as we're crunching data for some of the campaigns that are going on right now, there's, you know, something of 30 or 40% of the city that has recently relocated or purchased property within the last five or six years. And we still see the same faces that have been going on committees and commissions and task forces for the last 25 years. So it's time to broaden that set of viewpoints, would be my unsolicited suggestion. I also think that spending, so far, we've heard two consultancies today for $75,000 that seem somewhat unnecessary. I wish, I hope, one of you two, or both of you, get a full list of all consultancies, and their cost, and their, and their duration, and their sunset before the next meeting, and distribute that to the public. Because I wonder if anybody up there has that. But we should, because we just keep talking about these things on, on, you know, a nauseam basis, for another 50, another 75, another $30,000. It adds up to real money. We have had also city employees, ad nauseam, on a basement code provision for months. Why we cannot manage this process with the talent in this building is beyond me. Why we need to go outside of that. If we can spend inordinate amounts of human capital that we pay for on endless code discussions on attics and basements, and this is number seven of eight priorities on the CDP, it should become a priority of the staff and folks we already pay for. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Jan?
Jan Connaughty, Oak Avenue. Actually, I came to this meeting because today I got an email with a press release in it saying that we were hiring a consultant to do a strategic plan for the city for $28,000. And I just about fell over. We have a CDP, and there was going to be citizens involved. I have, we have a CDP, and we've had a CDP since 2004. Okay? We have never updated our zoning code to reflect the priorities in a CDP. And, you know, in 1993, we brought a group called DPZ into town to address anybody who wanted to hear about traditional neighborhood design, form-based code, blah, 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 all this stuff. Every architect within 150 miles came, but nobody else came. When I was on the city commission, we passed the vow report. Nothing much has been done. It's a piecemeal effort, piece by piece, instead of looking, this is a prime example, instead of looking overall at our code. Our code is a disaster. And what happens is, is that the court makes decisions about what's going to happen here, because we spent a fortune on lawyers when we could spend a lot less. Like, I wonder how much we spend for Max today. Probably a lot, because he's very expensive and he's very good. But the fact of the matter is, we spend money on lawyers, but we don't spend it on consultants, and not Wallace Montgomery, but people who are very into communities like ours with traditional neighborhood design, with form-based code. traditional neighborhood design, with form-based code, so we don't end up with a long rectangle down Rehoboth Avenue with no design, no anything, and it ruins this town. We had Ed McMahon here in 2017. He talked to, there was, you know, over 150 people here listening to him about this community and how we preserve this community. But what happened? Nada, nothing. So, so we've got this, we've got this, we're spending on legal fees instead of consultants. And I don't mean consultants like one, two, I mean, you bring a firm in here, and Ed gave me a list of seven names, I gave it to Sharon years ago, of people who would, who would specialize in looking at communities like ours. There is huge amounts of money in this city, and it's influencing what happens. So people will take you to court, people do the, we need to fix the code. We don't need any more strategic plans. We need to get that zoning code, and we need to get a firm that knows how to do this and legally how to do it. You don't need, I mean, a firm that specializes in a mixed use and in, I mean, in a zoning code for a community like ours, you don't need to have, you would have them do the mixed-use zoning. There are all kinds of interesting ways of doing mixed use. But I'm just like, I've about had it with, you know.
Thank you, Jan. Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Perry, Rick, and then Carolyn?
Richard Perry, 46 Pennsylvania Avenue. I'm glad that you're addressing this issue because it has been discussed ad nauseam in town for years, and nothing's been done about it, just like basically nothing's been done about our zoning code and the codes across the board, even though I was assured when I was on the planning commission, Sharon kept assuring me that, oh, it's in the works, it's in the works, the staff's working on it. I have never seen a comprehensive proposal coming from the staff as to what needs to be fixed in our zoning code. I could tell you, Jan could tell you, you know, why is this all taking so long? It's unbelievable to me. And the fact that we're doing things piecemeal, maybe we have to do them piecemeal because nobody wants to tackle the whole big project. But it needs to be done. The planning commission has been asking for it for years. I asked for it when I was there. And I think these consultants may have their place, but I don't see the need for a Wallace Montgomery or anyone else to come in here and draft a mixed-use ordinance. There are enough smart people in here, there are enough smart people in town who are willing to provide you with advice, and, you know, let's just get on with the job. And, you know, to your concern about involvement, people that you have listed there, the types of people that will be involved, are, I think, consistent with what the CDP provides. You're getting representatives. At the end of the day, this is going to a public hearing, and you will have all the community involvement, all of the business involvement that the CDP further contemplates. So I say just get to the work, and I don't think it takes a year to do this.
Thank you, Rick. Carolyn?
Carolyn, oh, that's too high. Carolyn Diefendorf, city resident. I'm going to touch on the timing also. I think it needs to be done in less than a year. I think you have to be able to vote on this in August because there's the potential for two new people up here in September. And if this whole thing is worked on this year and it's not voted on before the composition could potentially change, I think you lose more time. So I too think it needs to be speeded up. If you need as many meetings, you do it by having extra meetings in a month, not just one a month. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Anybody else? Members of the public?
I would just say, I think this needs to be part of a comprehensive zoning, not a one-off.
Thank you. Anybody else up here? Well, we've got, the agenda allows us to consider adoption of a resolution establishing the task force. It's all, again, articulated in front of us with the action item report, gives timelines, composition, et cetera. It does, of course, include mention of the hiring of a consultant, in this case Wallace Montgomery. So what is the pleasure of the commissioners?
I ask one question, and you may not be able to answer this, but realistically, how many parcels in the city could this have an impact on?
Oh, I'm not prepared to answer that.
Could you at some point in the near future?
Of course, absolutely, yes, I can.
Thank you.
Can I put you on the spot? You got, you got, the planning commission got through the 400 block of Rehoboth Avenue. Why can't we get through futures?
Well, what I was going to say is that the recommendation in the comprehensive development plan is that these, to Commissioner Gossett's question, I don't, I don't know the answer and the number, but it would only apply to properties in the commercial district and existing commercial districts. So in other words, this would not allow or provide for mixed use, new category in what are now residential districts. But the commercial districts are very important, and there's potential, I think, that, I don't think anyone disagrees with, a potential for, you know, for, for using, you know, these commercial spaces in a way that will benefit a wide range of groups and people. So the, the, the planning commission certainly can and will consider these projects, but the, the biggest problem, well, I can't speak on behalf of the planning commission, I mean, I'm just speaking off the cuff here, so I don't want to misrepresent anything. I will say that in the past, it has been a challenge when there are not code provisions to apply because mixed use, the phrase appears in our codes on various occasions, but it is not a zoning category. That's the problem. And so the enforcement of that and the application of that is, you know, is a challenge when it, when it doesn't exist. So that's my understanding of what the goal here would be, would be to create the code that would bind us and bind all the other, the building inspector, all the other city agencies that would be applying it. So that's my, and the other thing I would say is that, as, as we've noted earlier, the planning commission doesn't, we don't, not every project comes before us. You know, only, only large-scale projects come before us. And so relatively large-scale in terms of Rehoboth. So it's not obvious that every single example of mixed use would necessarily even come through the site plan review process. And, I mean, I'm, I'm just extrapolating here and I, I, you know, I wish I were more prepared than I am, but I didn't have the opportunity to really prepare any thoughts on this topic, except that I think there's widespread agreement that we want to be able to proceed with mixed-use development.
Thank you, Nancy. I put you on the spot twice, thank you, you did very well. So Mary Ellen, I don't know if you need more time to be able to respond to, can, can you do this task force without hiring an outside consultant?
I, I think the nature of it would change. So the, I, I wouldn't, then I, I would need to rethink it. Yeah, yeah, I've been saying, more time. Yeah, I would need to rethink it. If, if, if a consultant aspect were taken out of it, I would need to rethink how, how to approach it.
Sorry, may I make us, an idea about, we were just told by the fire chief, I believe, that there are 288 commercial properties, most of which are pretty well-established. So it might, we might be talking about a total of 25 or 30 properties. So I'm very concerned, this is just an extremely heavy-handed approach to maybe a few properties which might be, you know, be renovated or modified in the next five to 10 years. So I, I'm very worried about taking this approach on it, just.
Suzanne, you indicate you think it's heavy-handed. Is it less heavy-handed if they remove the consultant?
I think you'd get a lot of input and people would decide whether this is really a problem. Now, it was ranked number seven out of 88. That was a subjective ranking, although I guess it was among the seven on the board at the time. Is that how it, how it emanated? But, you know, I'm just concerned that we're creating a problem where they're probably, given that there are only 288 commercial properties, we just heard from the fire department.
Yeah, I would like to recheck that. I would like to, I, I don't know. I, I don't, we do, we do, we are able to check the number of parcels in each district, so I can certainly come back with that number. We're happy to do that.
Jan?
Yeah. I, I, I can certainly get that data.
Again, what's the pleasure of the commissioners? I'm, I'm willing to act on it if somebody makes a motion. I'm also willing to say, do we want to send her back to the drawing board and create a new program that does not utilize a consultant?
There was discussion here about, from one commissioner, about speeding up the process, and others concerned about spending money for a consultant. So those two things are opposite approaches to me, in my mind. We also consistently hear that building and licensing department are slow to process permits, slow to react to applicants' needs. So if that, if we are going to have the building and licensing department solely operate the task force here, that then takes time out of their days, which would also then slow down the process for other applicants. So it is.
Well, I appreciate what you're saying, but since Mary Ellen has only, has been here less than a year, in theory, this, you know, would be a perfect way for you to get more involved in something. So I, I think, I think the resources are there if you would, you know, be willing to reformulate this with you as the liaison and not use the services of this 42,000 over about 12 months of Wallace Montgomery.
Ms. Gray, you outlined specifically what the responsibilities for the consultant were. I've been about organizing the meetings, if you could just rehash that for a moment?
Sure. So the, and let me pull up the scope of work as well. So the, we're looking at, the consultant would be looking at providing assistance in code, what do I say, the assisting with, meeting organization, facilitation, note-taking, code research, task force meeting follow-up, presentation of materials, preparing presentation materials for a special public meeting, provide assistance in developing the draft and final ordinance, as well as any additional support is needed. That's kind of it in a nutshell in the, in the scope of work.
And do you feel, not to put you on the spot, but do you feel that your staff members could absorb that capabilities?
I don't, I don't really, I don't have a staff to do that.
That is one of the things that I would caution. So right now, without our full-time arborist, we have the contract arborist, Mary Ellen's the one that fields every tree complaint, and let's just say there's a lot of them. She has a lot of people that wear many hats, so not a lot of people, but you, you understand what I mean.
And no, and no discouragement on your members and your staffer capabilities, but you get what you pay for.
I, I'm a little concerned right in, and I. Thank you. Yes, I'm very sensitive to consultant costs, right? But I'm concerned that this conversation is diving into the classic means and methods, right? If we want mixed-use code, okay, that's the decision, and we want Ms. Gray to spearhead the creation of that mixed-use code, then at some point we need to rely on her to tell us what she needs to execute that task. And if, in her opinion, she needs consultants to support her to manage the committee, then I'm very reluctant to then tell her, get involved in the classic means and methods, and tell her how she should do her job. And I'm concerned that that is where this conversation is going. And maybe that's just my interpretation, but that is, and maybe no one else agrees with that interpretation, but that is kind of how I'm feeling right now.
Well, I'd say that this, this program is what she came up with.
Yeah. So if.
She didn't come up with not using a consultant.
Exactly.
She came up with this program.
Exactly. And though I'm sensitive, though I'm sensitive to consultant costs, if this is what she's telling us, if we want mixed-use code, and if this is what she needs to accomplish her task, then I'm reluctant to tell her not to use a consultant. And, and for one reason, which is, if I tell her she has to do it a certain way, and then she's unable to accomplish the task, who's at fault?
Oh, this is all her.
So, so, so I guess to drive back to answer your original question, look, I agree, and I think, I'm not, not hearing anyone out there who is saying we shouldn't do mixed-use code.
Oh, you haven't heard, no, I'm not sure we, there's a need for it. That's my problem with the whole.
What's that?
I don't think you should.
Premise.
I think you revise the entire code. It needs to be a part of the code.
Yeah, so to finish, right? So one of the things that I am hearing is that we need to revise more than just mixed code, and that's the way I feel, right? If we feel this is a step moving in that direction, then we should move in that direction if we feel we need to reset and look at a lot more code. But again, I mean, I'm concerned that, you know, it's just one more delay to getting something done.
If I may, Mayor? If I may, I'm sorry.
And then I want, and then I'm going to give the audience, the public a second chance at lesser minutes.
So, so I've heard discussion regarding, and from the public as well, regarding discussion about the, the need for the overall code revision. And, and I've been here, it's also been mentioned, I've been here a little, coming on a year. And I've been using that time to get myself assimilated, get my, to understand the workings of the community, understand the workings of this department. And my present, our preview of my presentation that I'm working on for next month is the project that I'll be, be looking to talk to you all about is, the CDP had articulated about 20 action items that speak to fixing the code, certain aspects of the code. And I was going to be, not presenting those, my plan is to look at those aspects as well as some other needs of the, of the code that need to be changed, and talk about that a little bit at, at my meeting in October, but then come back at a later date with an articulation of all the code provisions that need to be changed, with a recommended list of priorities of how those should be changed, and get input on how you all would like to see that order of priorities. Because there are a couple of boxes of these code changes. Some code changes are just text changes, they can be done very quickly, others are a little bit more involved. Regarding to an, an overall, top to bottom, and that was, so that, that would be the first step in fixing the code and the change, and, and some of the problems that we have with the code. Then, once those are all in place, then if there are other code provisions that we need to, to do, then we would do that longer term. It's been my experience that to undertake an overall changing of the zoning code is a very long. a very long-term effort that might or might not prove fruitful. And it's been my experience that if we take smaller bites of the apple that have been articulated that we need to get changed, that is a, is a more productive path to embark upon. And we already have aspects that have been identified that need to be changed. So that's, hope I'm not making sense, it's getting late in the day. Hope that makes sense to you all. So there is a plan in my brain, hasn't been written down, but it will be written down and articulated and further explained. But I, I am aware that there are some other code provisions that need to be changed.
Well, I'd like to go back to members of the public, just, I prefer you just do a minute for a second time, if you can be quick. Everybody's passing. Taylor's? Oh, you don't? Rick? Taylor, Taylor will have the floor, the attorney will have the floor, and then I'm going to call for a vote.
I'm sort of in between needing to have an overall comprehensive revision of the code. I've been asking for it since 2018. It hasn't happened, as I said before. With respect to mixed use, Board of Commissioners, you know, had this discussion back when Pat Calusi was serving on the Board of Commissioners, and she was pushing for mixed use. Way back when, nobody would do anything. When I was on the Planning Commission, we were saying we need mixed-use code provisions. Planning Commission that finally adopted the 2020 CDP said we need mixed-use code provisions. This is not a big task. You're talking, I think Dan would probably agree with me, and I follow very closely the 315, 317, 319 Rehoboth Avenue. The issues and the concerns they had were, what setback do you apply? Commercial setback or residential setback? What are the parking requirements? What's the height requirement? What's the lot coverage requirement? Because they're different for commercial and residential. There are very few things that need to be determined here. It doesn't take a year, it shouldn't even take more than two or three months to figure that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Tom Gainer?
Tom Gainer, again, property owner. Couldn't agree more with Rick. This, Wallace Montgomery or any other consultant is going to start with precedent. And starting with five or six other jurisdictions worth of precedent is not brain surgery for this discrete component of the code. It can, I agree with him. It can be done very, very quickly. It can be integrated with the rest of our code very quickly, because probably there's not an extraordinary amount of change that's required. And I agree with your approach overall. I don't agree that this should be a captive to a massive code overhaul. You want to talk about something that's going to slog into the, into the dust, that's it. But taking it in smaller apples, in smaller bites of the apple, as you described, is probably absolutely the way to go. But this is an easy, I think this is an easy lift. It's not as intimidating as it may sound. From one lawyer's ignorant perspective, but also from another lawyer's probably more in a superior perspective, I think this can be done. Probably two months is an easy one with the right precedent, so.
Tom, are you saying it's an easy lift with using a consultant?
No, I think it's an easy lift without the consultant. Look, we've all seen how much time, effort, and energy the staff has been able to contribute to attics and basements. I think with six pieces of decent precedent that can be culled together very quickly, there is not that much that's got to really be done in order to integrate those components of a mixed-use code provision or code section into the rest of our code. It's, it's, it's not brain surgery.
All right, thank you. Anybody else up here? Anybody? Jan, last, everybody gets a second chance, and that's all.
Sorry, I'll just add very quickly, and I don't know if Mary Ellen knows, but downtown is full of mixed use. Shorebreak Lodge has an apartment above it. Our friends, the Ellison's rented there. There is apartment buildings all down that alley behind, you know, that Wilmington Avenue extension. There's all kinds of mixed use. It isn't rocket science, you know? And it goes back to before. It was 2004, I believe, the long-range plan also asked for mixed use. Asked for a lot of things, none of which we've gotten.
Thank you, Dan. Can I make? You're good. Can I make a comment? I'd like to make a comment. Do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out, the resolution itself does not address whether a consultant will be hired. So if there's a desire to create this task force, the resolution does not touch upon that topic, and that can be decided at a future time.
Alex, could you qualify for us? Like, if we do, you know, I am sort of neutral toward the creation of this task force at this point, but if it were to be resolved today, the problem is that a later, if we then defer to a later date, whether or not, you know, Ms. Gray can use the services of Wallace Montgomery, those who may have voted, you know, the vote, they will sort of have our hands tied at that point, and we may end up with this consultant. So it's, it's problematic for me to vote without knowing whether this consultant services, I don't, yeah, I agree with Mr. Gainer and others. We don't need a consultant. And there, there aren't that many properties which are going to be, where it's going to be relevant in the next 10 years. And yes, of course, we all know, as Ms., as Jan Conisty pointed out, yes, we have a tremendous, in the commercial district, we have probably more mixed use than non-mixed use. So if I had to guess, I mean, you have residential apartments above, you know, 60 to 80% of the small boutique businesses. So I don't know how to frame, like, if you could advise us on how to make sure we don't end up voting for a task force and then end up with this original blueprint and not have any other, you know, any other choice.
Yeah, that is a valid concern. I was just pointing out, the resolution itself does not address the consultants. So in one way, it could be thought of as kicking the can down the road. That's a valid point.
So again, I, you know, this is what Mary Ellen came up with. This is her program. I'm sure she thought about doing it with it, with or without a consultant, but this is her program. We can also send her back to the drawing board, but I need, I need feedback so that we can include this.
I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to perpetuate, if I can, more fruit-related metaphors. Apples falling from trees, things like that, low-hanging fruit, all that. What I'm hearing from my colleagues and from Mary Ellen is, and the assembled here, and Commissioner Theres' concerns about telling people how to do their job and so forth. I think, I think we, we have the tasks at hand that we want to try to, to solve, or, you know, that we want to complete. And, and I think this, our staff person has sort of sussed that out to a considerable degree. I think we have enough discussion and history with regards to what the needs are, with regard to updating the, the code that we know about, and as, as Mary Ellen described. And so I, I would like for us, I think, is to basically define what the task is and let it happen. And if there's need for staffing and inability to get the thing done because of all these other intervening things, then, and a consultant may be needed or to assist, you know, it may doesn't lead the thing, but maybe carries out, you know, part of it or something like that, why do we have to get involved in that part of it? So I would, I would like for us to basically, I hope without too much of a, you know, complicating it, but to basically define what we expect to have happen. If, if this is part of a, of a, maybe a slightly longer process to fulfill the other code revisions that we'd like to see, that you may recommend for us, maybe in the next month, can we do that?
No, I appreciate what you're saying, but with all due respect, since Mary Ellen's position as a city planner is wholly new for the city. We didn't previously have a full-time city planner. One would hope by creating that position, it would obviate some of these consultancies in areas that would seem to be the, you know, the expertise of someone who's worked in city planning. I know, and you've worked in Dover, I know you've worked in other, in the DC area. So I'm just concerned that we're, you know, when we should be able to rely less on consult, the few times we should be able to rely less on a consultant, on a, you know, on a, on a consultant, in fact, we're continuing the same, you know, trend of using consultants.
Well, we haven't yet, and that's what I'm saying. We're saying we're going to do this. Let's define it, it seems to be reasonably well-defined now, and let's move forward. And if it comes to, if we learn in this process, as it moves along, that maybe we need more help or something like that, then we can do it. We're not, we're not approving, as, as our solicitor said, we're not approving a consultant. We're, we're approving the work plan, so.
Yeah, after, after the Planning Commission had done their thing with the 400 block, those three properties, 400 block of Rehoboth Avenue, I talked with one of the Planning Commission members, and I had, and I was relayed what some of the problems were with the height, and how do you do this and that? And Rick articulated that. And I had suggested that that person do a white paper or something, you know, while it's fresh in your mind, tell us, tell us what the problems are. And I don't think that was ever done, but to me, that would have been helpful and a starting point, perhaps. Bunky, I hear you. I don't know who's going to, you know, what is our next step going to be at this table? Is what I'm trying to figure out, because.
I, I think we are, we are, hopefully can cobble together a motion that says we want to move forward with this, give Mary Ellen the responsibility to sort of assemble it if we need to fine-tune it. But, but I would, I would like to see, and as others have said, I don't think it's that complicated. It's basically, we need to have the standards that we need to apply if we come up with, you know, of mixed-juice project that we can't, you know, it's like, can we fix that part?
Why, why can't we use what's already articulated?
I'm not saying we can't.
I don't even know why we're talking.
But what I'm getting at is we're getting all wrapped around the axle about.
You're saying, will you approve it with or without a consult or whatever?
Right.
Get the thing done.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution of the mayor and commissioners of the city of Rehoboth Beach, establishing a mixed-use zoning ordinance task force as an advisory committee to the mayor and city commissioners of the city of Rehoboth Beach.
Do we have a second? Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Patrick Gossett and a second by Commissioner Bunky Markert to adopt a resolution establishing a mixed-use zoning ordinance task force as an advisory committee to the mayor and commissioners of the city of Rehoboth Beach. Is there any additional discussion up here? Now, remember, that, that motion is verbatim for what's in front of us. So it includes a task force. I'm sorry, it includes a consult.
It does not.
Well.
It doesn't.
Task force, you're not doing, okay.
It's leaving it uncertain as to.
It's a proposal.
Okay, so you.
If we need to finesse it.
Okay, so we have, I just want to make sure I'm clear. Obviously, I need to make sure I'm clear in the motion. Would you recite the motion? Or articulate that it does not include?
Thank you, Mayor.
A consultant.
So this resolution does not touch upon the consultant, so it does not include the consultant. This resolution is about establishing the task force. And the program itself can be fleshed out more.
And so you don't want to add in there that their consultant is included? Patrick?
I don't think it necessary at this point in time.
Okay, okay, I just want to be clear.
Well, who will have the authority to determine whether a consultant can be used?
It'll have to come back to us.
Okay, it will, okay, no problem.
But it'll come back to us.
I know I'm speaking out of order. May I just have one comment? And I apologize for speaking out of order, if I may. If that is the motion, I am concerned that I do not have the, I would like to rethink if the pleasure of the commission is to move forward with this mixed-use ordinance. Awesome. I would like to rethink that, and if we're not going to move forward with a consultant, which, if that's the pleasure of the commission, then I would like to rethink how to do this, how to get this accomplished. Because establishing a task force requires a lot of resources, setting it up, reviewing the, it, it, it's, it's another level of, of work, which is, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just stating that that's another level of work. So I would like the opportunity, if that's the pleasure of the commission, to rethink how I would go about getting this, getting this accomplished. That's what I would like to say. I apologize for speaking out of order. Thank you, Mayor.
How I interpret the motion on the floor is to adopt exactly what your program is, with the exception of the consultant. And so what I think what you're saying is, if without a consultant, you want more time to redesign the program.
Yes, sir.
If I could ask the city manager, how was this intended to be funded with the outlined resolution presented?
So it's in a budgeted line item for other professional services. So if we move forward with that, funds do exist for this type of effort. If, really what I'm hearing is if there's a policy shift that this board would like to see, I can come up with a staffing plan to eliminate the majority of use of consultants. I mean, if that's what this board wants, I can bring an item in the future, but ultimately, any project supervised under the city manager, I can move forward with a consultant according to the code. So it's completely up to you. I'm listening. If you don't want us to use a consultant, we can definitely just bring this item back and have a different plan. Or we can move forward with it as presented. But I do believe there's a motion and a second on the floor.
Mary Ellen, how much is, how much did you say the consultant would be?
Right now, the estimated cost is $42,360.
Forty-two?
Forty-two thousand, to be split among the two budget years.
All right, well, we do have a motion on the floor. And second, and the motion is to adopt the resolution establishing a mixed-use zoning ordinance. And that's what's in front of us. Is there any further discussion?
The only thing I was concerned about, it seems like there are some unknowns, I mean, you're sort of articulating, I'm not really sure. Can we build into this something to the effect that you're going to move forward to try to assemble the task force, and if there, you know, like, you want to come back to us or something with, these are the problems, these are the potential obstacles, or something like that? Or, or, you know, so, so you're not, like, kind of stuck, you know?
My preference, Commissioner, I'm thinking off the cuff here, is that if we're, as I just mentioned, articulated, the establishing a task force is, requires, you know, a level of effort, higher level of effort than, than putting together a smaller work group, here again, just thinking off the top of my head, putting together a smaller work group and ratcheted-down level of effort. I should, that's not, that's not a good term. I'm sorry, I'm just thinking off the cuff, off the cuff. So my preference would be that we don't establish a task force, that we establish a different type of work group. So it wouldn't rise to the level of a task force. It would, it would have, would be a more of a work group, more of a, a less formal work group. It would have, would be more of a work group, more of a, a less formal work group. But I would put pen to paper to bring that back, if that's the pleasure of the commission.
All right, I'm ready to call the question. Again, the motion is to adopt the resolution establishing a...
If I may, if that's the request of staff to restructure this, then I would withdraw my motion.
And that would be my preference, and especially because Mary Ellen asked for it. But how do we deal with withdrawing a motion? Does the seconder need to, you are the seconder, you need to withdraw your motion?
I mean, I'm just, I'm really trying to figure out a way to basically get something started here.
But she wants more time.
I know, but I'm just saying, can we give her, can we frame this in such a way that we can give her the flexibility to sort of explore the things that she needs to do, and then come back and say?
She comes back and says, "I absolutely need a consultant."
Then we're going to vote on it.
If I...
Is that wrong? I don't know.
Well, if the... Money is in the budget at this point in time. And it was presented as a task force coming forward without the implications of funding. But there is funding set aside for projects like this. I know we have concerns on spending money, spending money, spending money. But I go back to the fact that if this is something that we want to have happen, and it's been in the CDP for decades, then an investment in this is the right way to go. You know, people from the audience, "Oh, well, this could be done very simply. It's only this, it's only that." But you haven't been sitting at the table, and you're not listening to our qualified staff member to present what, how to do this right. So it's a frustrating aspect. And we're very typical of this in having a very formal, very thought-out, very logical presentation from a qualified staff member, and then we start picking it apart. So I'm going to go put my motion back on, back and forth, flip-flopping here. Motion to adopt a resolution of the Mayor and the Commissioners of the City of Rahoboth Beach establishing a mixed-use zoning ordinance task force as an advisory committee to the Mayor and Commissioners of the City of Rahoboth Beach.
And I'm going to second it, because I think in that, we can get started on this. And you can, you know, and if this isn't going to happen, then you're going to tell us.
That's still not confirming that we're authorizing her to do, to hire a consultant?
We don't, we don't need to do that, because the city manager is authorized with the money that he has in the budget. And I don't want to sit here and continue to micromanage everything that's happening. It is our obligation, if we see that a task force has been, a consultant is hired, and we're like, why the hell is there a task force hired? Why was she not able to do her job? Then we need to start making the expectations and the performance evaluation of her city manager stronger, and we need to start holding staff accountable. But we can't sit here and second-guess and tell people how to do their jobs or what he's allowed to use or not use in an already-approved budget. We just need to put a little bit of faith in people and in the expertise of our staff. And when they're not doing what we expect them to do, or they're not being efficient or using the resources how we think they should be used, then we need to start holding them accountable. And maybe we need to, there needs to be staffing changes, I don't know. But that needs to come after the fact. But we need to make the commitment that we continuously do that, and we evaluate everything that's being done, and we give feedback to the city manager.
Final word, I'd like to call the question. And the motion on the floor is adopt a resolution establishing a mixed-use zoning ordinance task force as an advisory committee to the Mayor and Commissioners. I'm going to do a roll call vote. We rotate who we start with. Commissioner Stranowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Gossett?
Aye.
Commissioner Markert?
Aye.
Commissioner Thier?
Aye.
Commissioner Good?
Nay.
And the chair votes aye, and that's five to one, and the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. With that, we're going, the next item of business, which is the only bit of new business left, consider appointments to the Audit Committee. The Audit Committee is usually reappointed on an annual basis. They work with the Auditor Company to review the audits. This is a repeat performance for Jim Hordy as Chair, James Little, and William Pearlstein. Do I get the motion to appoint or reappoint the noted slate of...
Mayor, I move to appoint the members of the Audit Committee, being James Hordy Chair, James Little, and William Pearlstein.
Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Ed Stranowski and a second by Commissioner Patrick Gossett to reappoint James Hordy as Chair, James Little, and William Pearlstein to the Audit Committee. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and the motion carries, they are reappointed. Are there any commissioner announcements or comments? The AIDS Walk Delaware is tomorrow. They asked me to do a proclamation, which I have written on behalf of the Mayor and Commissioners, and I'll read that tomorrow. Are there any other commissioner announcements or comments?
I would just request that the next either workshop or when the information's available, that we have, quote, "an end-of-season report" with regards to parking, beach patrol, and police activities over the season.
Parking, beach patrol, and what else?
Police, but not limiting to those, whatever the...
Yeah, okay, plus, okay.
We have been planning an after-season report.
All righty.
And I have a request on the budget. The sewer revenue, well, wastewater treatment revenue, it's termed sewer revenue on the budget, from Dewey Beach and Henlopen Acres apparently declined this year from the prior year. So if, Mr. Tetter, you could, to understand that, it seems odd because, you know, volume has risen, at least we were told, in terms of water consumptions. And normally, you know, wastewater goes sort of one and one. And if you could figure out whether that's, you know, what's driving that. That's not a good thing. We need the wastewater revenue from the surrounding areas that we, you know, treat and then send to the outfall. That would be great.
Sure, I can get you an answer on that.
Any other commissioner comments? If not, review future meeting dates. The very next commissioner's workshop is Monday, October 7th at 9:00 a.m. With that, we'll move to citizen comment. This is for opportunity to speak off-topic, things that aren't on the agenda, and there's a three-minute limit. And Walter, you're in.
To Burning Ham 123 Henlopen Avenue, in a positive sense, and I wouldn't have your job for a million dollars. But the, thanks to Carol Diefendorfer, an idea was proposed about bathrooms. Stupid, but came out to have bathrooms through Seawich. And I understand a couple of you got together and enabled that. And for that, I thank, thank you all for all those people that have to go to the bathroom.
Thank you. Anybody else, public comment? If not, then this meeting is adjourned at 6:18 p.m. Thank you very much.